Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District. I see Councilman Burnett, representing the 8th District. Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District. Councilman Costello, representing the 11th District. Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District. And Councilwoman Ramos, representing the 14th District. I don't see Councilman Glover on at the moment. If you are on, please speak up. If not, I suspect he'll be on later. From members of the Office of the President, do I have Nikki Thompson on the line?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nikki. Matt Steckman? And Erin DeGraff, right? And then, representing the Mayor's Office, Natasha Mihir? And Nina Demelis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so this afternoon, the Committee will have a session for two bills. Bill LO-21-0006 and Resolution 21-0040R. The LO-21-0006 is the Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan for the purpose of the Committee holding a hearing quarterly to review crime statistics for the Police Department and to monitor the progress of the Biennial Violence Prevention Plan. And Bill 21-0040R is the Informational Hearing: Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design for the purpose of inviting the Director of the Department of Planning, the Commissioner for the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Executive Director for the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, the Commissioner of the Baltimore City Health Department, the Commissioner of the Baltimore Police Department, the Acting Director of the Department of Public Works, I guess now Director of the Department of Public Works, the Director of the Department of Transportation, the Chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department, the State's Attorney for Baltimore City, the Sheriff for Baltimore City, the Chief of the Baltimore City Police, the School Police, the Director of the Department of General Services, the Director of the Department of Recreation and Parks, and the Director of the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation to appear before the Baltimore City Council to discuss the ways that the city can prevent crime through the concepts utilized in the crime prevention through an environmental design model. Both bills are sponsored by myself, Councilman Conway. And, you know, once again, good afternoon. I just want to wish folks, first off, a Happy New Year. I hope all my colleagues had a little bit of time to catch a breather because we're going to jump right back into it. We're here today to review the data from 2021 and to continue discussions about the strategies to address crime and violence through our cities' communities. This means both taking a high-level approach to Baltimore's crime statistics, but then also drilling down on specific posts in areas that the Department and the city agencies have flagged. I've asked BPD to talk through their data, and I've asked the agencies to come prepared to talk about how their resources and services fit into efforts to make these areas safer. And while we shouldn't shy away from recognizing the progress made in the last year, we also can't ignore the number of homicides that left so many people grieving for their loved ones. We are seeing some reductions in property crimes as well as continued increases in the homicide clearance rate. And groups like Safe Streets are offering the kind of community-centered approaches that build safer and stronger communities in the long run. And the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement has pulled together some of the top violence prevention strategies in their comprehensive plan. I want to commend especially the majors in my district, Major Shorter in the Northern District, and Major Holman in the Northeastern District for their willingness to engage with the community at Black Parties, at community meetings, and also by making sure their officers are walking the beat and getting to know the communities with which they work with. Nevertheless, our city still saw two more homicides in 2021 than we did in 2020. And neighborhoods are still hurting. We're not where we need to be. And I'm very sensitive to the impatience, the disappointment, and sometimes outright anger that many Baltimoreans are feeling toward the city government right now. We shouldn't lose sight of the big picture and long-term strategies, but I hear almost daily from people who want relief and semblance of safety in their neighborhoods now. So I'll wrap up here, and I want to give BPD an opportunity to give us their presentation before we start to dive into each of the posts. So BPD will provide us with a high-level briefing of crime statistics from 2021 and any information that they would like to speak about for 2022. And then, right after that, we'll go right into a presentation of the top 10 violent posts in the city, one by one, and have a conversation about what are the drivers of crime in that area and what city agencies are doing and what they can do to help assist with the police response in those neighborhoods. So with that, I'll turn it over to the Police Department.
Thank you, Chairman Conway. For the record, my name is Michelle Wordsprider. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. We have a number of folks joining us today so that we can hopefully answer all of your questions and provide you the information that you require. Leading our conversation and our presentation will be Colonel Kevin Jones. We're also joined by Lieutenant Colonel Martin Bartonis, Lieutenant Colonel Monique Brown, Colonel Rich Warley, Lieutenant Colonel Jack Kerzog, Managing Director Graham Campbell, Legislative Affairs Coordinator Shannon Conway, Director Sarah Ritter, and Captain Azalee Johnson. And let me just share our presentation with you all. Do you see it?
Yep, we can see a presentation.
Okay, all right. And then, with that, I will turn it over to Colonel Jones.
Happy good morning or good afternoon, everyone, to the hearing panel and to my esteemed colleagues. Hopefully, everyone can hear me. Anyone who knows how I work on these Zooms, I normally cannot either hear you or you can't hear me, and I fumble for the first five minutes of doing this. Why? It seems to be Murphy's Law. But if we can go into the next slide, Michelle, we'll get right to the citywide crime overview. So the overview for the city of Baltimore for the 2021 versus 2020. We show on the slide that there was an increase of 9% in reference to homicides as compared to 2020. So we were 338 versus 335. And then, there was also a slight increase of 1.1% in reference to non-fatal shootings of 729 versus 721. I don't want to glaze over this as I progress into the other categories that we will address as far as UCR crimes. But I will say that I agree with you, Councilman Conway, that, you know, we are trying to improve upon those areas that we've seen decreases and increase those. But at the same time, we're trying to mitigate those areas that we did not have those successes that we wanted to for 2021. We realize and with you hear the struggle and concerns in our community members and our citizenry of Baltimore in reference to addressing those areas of public safety that concern them. So with that continuing down, our list, sir, for rapes, we were minus 1.4%, 288 versus 282 for 2020. Carjackings, we were up by 3.3%, 535 versus 518. We were up 28% in reference to commercial robbery, 736 versus 574. With the street robberies, we were down 15% going from 1,692 from 2020. Reference to our residential robberies, we were up 5.2%, 526 in '21 versus 520. And reference to our aggravated assaults, we were up 1.4%, 5,435 versus 5,359. When it comes to arsons, we were up 11%, 118 versus 106. We were up 4% auto thefts, 3,130 versus 3,011. We were minus 16% in burglaries, 3,403 versus 4,063. We were down 18% in larceny from 7,687 to 6,274 in '21. But we were also up by 22% larceny from autos going from 3,670 to 4,484. So again, where we saw those decreases, we are definitely looking to not only maintain that but increase that in the year 2020. But as far as those areas that we know that we need improvement, we do realize that when it comes to homicides and fatal shootings, that this resonates with the citizenry of Baltimore. It's something that we constantly hear, news cycled and on the media. But we also realize that in those areas where public safety is making people feel vulnerable, we did have some decreases in those residential burglaries, which individuals also have vested interests of interest in filling seats in their homes. Michelle, if you could go to the next slide, please. So right now, this is the district homicides comparison, as you see, for the 2021 compared to 2016. We have definitely, in some of the districts, majority of the districts have shown an increase as compared to the last year. But in some others, you've seen decreases since the beginning of 2016. Our focus continues to be the Eastern and the Western District as well as the Southwest and the Southern. We know our top four districts are high-priority districts. We focus this not only through homicides and non-fatal shootings, but it is addressed three times a week with our crime call. That is, we just had one at 12 o'clock today, as well as the 360 focus of our COMSTAT process every Thursday where we bring at least two to three districts up to include our CID and other partners in the agency to highlight these areas of the city that we're showing a high propensity to violence, going down and to boiling it down to where we need to be, the connectivity between these cases, whether it be shot spawner, calls for service, are there any precursors? Is there any casings that are matching up through IBIS or other things? And trying to figure out basically the six degrees of Kevin Bacon of how these cases may be connected. But also, for those that have no connectivity, I am a firm believer that, I hate to say it like this, I'd rather have connectivity to see how we can better address these because when there is no connectivity, I'm not sure where the next event will come in. If it's something that's going on in the district, we can have the extraction of specific targets, but sometimes when you don't have those specifics, now you're kind of wondering where will the next act? So as you clearly see for the homicide comparison, where each and every district was. But there's no questions for that. I'll just move to the non-fatal shootings. Thank you, Michelle. So in reference, oh, so before I go to that. Yep, so for the non-fatal shootings, Michelle, I'm sorry, you were right, I had too many pages. So for the non-fatal shootings, we were having success throughout the year. Of course, the non-fatal shootings is an undertaking of the Chief of Patrol's Office where homicide is housed, the CID. As we both know, both divisions have shown an increase in clearances for the 2021, which is improved technology and processes in reference to veteran cases and case load management. But it's also an indication of partnerships with federal partners and our community in reference to tips that are leading us in the right direction. So it's a holistic approach of how we're trying to address crime, not only in 2021 but going forward to 2022. So this current list is showing the comparison of the non-fatal shootings for each district. Again, we're showing some districts, many of the districts have slight increases as compared to 2020. But you will see, like, in the Northern District, there was a decrease from 2020 to 2021. You've highlighted that, sir, with the District Commander and Shorter. Leave him, stellar job in reference to their community components, getting there, getting out there, but also, I'm also not satisfied, you know. Both districts show those decreases, but we know that it is a constant thing that we have to keep on the radar. Myself, I don't know what the mayor does. Belair Road Corridor is a convenient way home normally, or I would use the Miami Street Corridor, or I would use 40 going down. So these are constant areas that I'm monitoring. Sometimes the district has winds along that Belair Street, Belair Road Corridor. And other days, it is some improvement that is needed. Even from my level on down, messaging towards the District Commanders of these things in my office seat with the utilization of our Unit 41, which is our nighttime commander, not only identifying that the officers are where they need to be based on their crime plans, but they're also doing what they're supposed to be doing. So Major Howell has been a stalwart for us with over 40-some years of BPD seniority, still willing to be out there and giving us that eyes on the evening hours of where we need to be. But not only in reference to filling those gaps for those violent areas, but also ensuring that the resources, as far as manpower and vehicles, are being optimized. That sometimes we were having some issues with vehicles being doubled up. So then, we pushed it down to Major Howell to ensure that each and every vehicle that is available to our offices is being properly utilized and maintained. So we're going granular where we have to because the idea is if you have two officers working together sometimes, that's not giving those post areas and those microzones the necessary touches that they need. So we're making sure that we're trying to exhaust everything, squeezing the lemon as best as we can to get the most out of it to better serve the citizenry, give the expectations that you have for a BPD team. Michelle, if you can go to the next slide, we'll talk briefly about the homicide arrests. Clearly, as it stated, there was 130 homicide suspects have been arrested in 2021. Of those, 108 of those suspects were arrested with a previous record. 57 were repeat violent offenders. 22 suspects had no previous record. As we talk about this and we talk about individuals that are at risk, we have identified, of course, individuals that had, fortunately, prior history with a handgun or victims or suspects in other crimes. So we look at these previous arrest records as a litmus test of individuals who have a propensity to be either a next shooter or our next victim. So we're constantly keeping this list robust. We're keeping the districts as far as who they are prioritizing, as far as individuals on their radar that need to be touched as simply as knock and talks to say, hey, look, is everything okay? We know that this case was going on, and we know that this is going on.
Colonel Jones, I want to ask a quick clarified question. If we don't have this data, I would love to pull it together. I'm curious, out of those 57 repeat violent offenders, or even generally, how many were on probation?
I do not know that of the repeat violent offenders, but that is something that we can get to, sir. I do know, so specifically for the at-risk individuals, as of, it has not been updated, but as of December 16, if you give me a second to find it, at-risk individuals, there were... I'm sorry, for the P&amp;P, there were 625 individuals of our at-risk individuals who were actively on P&amp;P at that time. I would say that some of those individuals that were previous arrest records.
Can you repeat the number again?
625 of our at-risk individuals do have a previous open parole and probation.
Got it, but that's just the general part.
That's the general population of like the 4,000-some individuals that are on.
Mr. Chairman, we've made a note, and we'll add that to the slide deck moving forward.
What exactly, Councilman, Council President? You wanted to note a percentage of federal parole probation from the previous years? Previous year?
Yes, from...
May for this year?
For the homicide arrests, how many of those were on probation?
I can give you an amount of suspects that were on probation. We don't have it, we had about 25% of the suspects in homicides.
That is very helpful, thank you.
Thanks, Rich, I appreciate that.
That tells us a lot. Yeah, I'm sorry, keep going.
And as we can move forward, Michelle, in reference to the non-fatal shootings. So in reference to the shooting arrests and reference to 2021, as you can clearly see, 145 non-fatal shooting suspects have been arrested in '21. Of that, 145, 113 suspects had previous arrest records. 63 were repeat violent offenders, where 32 suspects had no previous arrests. I'm trying to look at my end-of-the-year report. I know, I think that's what Rich was working off of. I'm trying to work off of multiple sheets here. I'm trying to find out what the percentage of people on P&amp;P is. So give me a second to try to navigate that. So what I have of the suspects in reference to non-fatal shootings, we were showing that there were 32 suspects on P&amp;P at the time of the incident. And of those, 32, 12 were gun-related offenses for P&amp;P.
And that's once again four suspects, not convicted or charged? Okay, excellent, thank you.
Yep, Michelle, if you can go forward. Thank you. Gun-related arrests, we know that we focus a lot of our GBRS, GBI information on gun-related incidents. What we show on this chart is gun arrests for 2021 with 1,388. This was a slight decrease from 2020, 1,443, a slight decrease of 3%. Patrol gun arrests were 1,258, slightly down as well by 3%. And non-patrol gun arrests were 130, that was down 10%. You see the breakdown of each and every district where there have been some successes as far as 2021 versus 2020. This has been a focus of ours, not only in those districts that have had success that we've seen in the Southwest, the Northern, and the Central, or the Eastern as leading, but those districts that have not been leading. This is something that we use through our COMSTAT process in reference to identifying those methodologies used and processes in reference to how they're getting the guns. We know that those districts that are utilizing their B6s, that have their GBRS rooms and their gun focus, that's shown success. Those districts that have not are trying to model them in reference to the practices that they are using in reference to the analytics of shot spawner, discharge, previous occurrences of incidents where the officers need to be in reference to either characteristics of an armed person or the quick response to shot spotters in reference to getting those in the neighborhood. I believe within the last, I believe it was a day or two ago that the Central District made a hack, crashed 400 Baltimore Street. So that's definitely one of those arrests of where we need to be in reference to the propensity of not only hitting multiple victims injured in locations we've had issues in the past. So this continues, will continue for 2022 to be a focus of ours and what we use as a litmus test where we need to be of the availability of guns and the individuals having the audacity to continue to carry guns. This has been something where we have been pushing, not only pushing with our officers, but have seen the successes that our team is not giving up, either from patrol, the mobile metro teams, our task force teams, our ACS. Everybody has this clear focus on crime prevention through the acquisition of handguns. Michelle, next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, we have shown definitely some increases, notably so in reference to our clearance rates. 2020, we were at 40.30% in reference to our homicide clearance. At the end of the year, we were showing 42%. Showed that the non-fatal shooting for 2020, it was 21.2%. We increased that by 4 to 25.1%. No, and I won't speak for the homicide unit, but I know the homicide COMSTAT that they have in reference to their case closures is paramount in reference to them having increased numbers. We taking a model from the homicide unit, adopted the middle part of this year, an unfatal shooting scorecard that we use as a best practice of case management, of not only making sure that detectives 101 are doing the initial basics and following up in reference to case clearances, but also that they're talking amongst themselves and being held accountable. I think before, we would just expect them to do the best, but now, we're holding them accountable with this metrics of basically a red light, green light system of where they were showing either areas of improvement or areas of success. And we've been continuing to do that. In fact, this week, the First District will be up, at least the Eastern and the Southwest will be up Friday for their non-fatal shooting scorecard. So we will continue to push upon this. I know it was edict from the mayor that even though we have had successes in both the non-fatal shootings and homicides, that we will not sit back on our laurels and expect that, you know, this is good enough that we will continue to press to even improve upon these numbers going forward.
Yep, and as far as homicides, we've been doing the scorecard for several months. The homicide detectives and sergeants and supervisors, lieutenants are getting so good at it that they're in the 90 percentile almost every time we go through it. So next year, we're going to add a few more things to the scorecard so we can score some more things because they've gotten so well at doing it.
Awesome, thank you. And does that conclude the sort of citywide overview?
Yes, sir, that does conclude our citywide overview.
Excellent. Do you mind taking down the presentation? I'm going to open the floor to the Committee for questions. I want to follow up on the question that I asked earlier with regard to folks on probation. If you could just in a follow-up confirm those numbers with me, just so I have them. And the Committee has them. I think that's a really, 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 really important opportunity for us. Of course, if we have arrested someone before, identified that they've got a proclivity toward violence, we should be doing everything in our power to make sure that they don't commit another act of violence thereafter. Sometimes that's services, sometimes that's making sure that we're better with that sentencing. I think each case will be what it is. So if we can confirm that, that would be really helpful. And then, also to that end, can we cross-reference the juvenile probation folks as well? Just to see how many of juveniles are included in that group as well. I wouldn't be surprised if that's not pulled into your rates as well. And just a thought more than anything, a comment. It's interesting to me that for both homicides and shootings, roughly 43% of all the homicides and shootings that we saw, let me make sure I have that. 43% of those arrested or 43% of the suspects were violent repeat offenders, given the numbers that you guys shared. That's a lot. That's a real opportunity for us. These are people that we already know about. We already have some interaction with. It really makes me wonder what more we could be doing to make sure they don't continue down that route. 43% tells me that we're not a good job, we're not doing a great job in preventing them from ending out back on the streets committing the same acts that got them in trouble the first time. And then, the fact that roughly 25% of suspects were on parole and probation, of course, we'll reconfirm those numbers, also tells me a lot about our parole and probation system. We're having the same problem there. We identify these folks, we know that they have a proclivity toward violence or are in violent situations or whatever the case is. What can we be doing to better address those folks? With that, I'm going to turn over any questions from the Committee before we move forward. Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks, colleagues, for coming on, and I hope everybody had a nice holiday. I have a separate question, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. We haven't talked about police staffing in a while. And I know, you know, we're focused right now on the shootings and homicides. But certainly, we, you know, through the consent decree, we've been trying to deal with this issue of staffing. And we had some deeper conversations about it earlier in the year. I, you may not have this information now, so if you can get it to us for next time. I'm concerned that when we talk about all the time that police need to spend on patrol and on, you know, investigations and, you know, all of these things, that we don't have enough time. Because a lot of your, of our officers end up spending time with... Because a lot of your, of our officers end up spending time with car accidents, car crashes in our city. And of course, we know that our car crashes are actually going up after pandemic. So I'd like to get a sense of the amount of time that our officers are spending on being at car accidents, car crashes. And if we can get the data on like the nine-one-one calls that we're getting from certain intersections that show which intersections are like the worst for crashes, because I think to solve this issue so that you all have more time to go out and do what needs to be done to keep our neighborhoods safe, I want to solve this issue of why people, you know, part of it is just how our infrastructure is, part of it is that people are just driving crazy. Part of it is that the intersections aren't designed right. So we, we actually have tools to solve this problem. And I'd like to kind of, you know, delve down a little bit deeper on this. And then next meeting, Mr. Chair, maybe we can have a conversation more around staffing as well. Because again, one of the things that we talked about with the consent decree monitoring team a few weeks ago, months ago, whenever it was, was this issue of how can we make sure that we're getting rid of stuff that you all shouldn't be doing so that you can concentrate on the stuff we should be doing. And we talk about nine-one-one diversion, which I think we'll have a longer conversation about at some point, but I also want to think about this other piece.
If I could just address very, very briefly, thank you, Councilwoman, for your question. I, I, I think that you're really looking at this very analytically and very thoughtful, and, and we absolutely appreciate that. Part of what we've been doing is trying to find ways to reduce burden where we can, where it makes sense, where it's appropriate for us to say, okay, no, we shouldn't be doing this. Maybe someone else should. So we are happy to, to look at that. I'll remind you that there is a bill before this committee, the, the false alarm bill that could be very instrumental in reducing our burden if you all should, should, should pass that. There are ideas that we have been working on as well, or strategies around crashes, particularly where there's. I don't want to release that yet, but, but we have been working on other ideas around that because perhaps we're not necessarily always the best folks to, to attend those, those types of incidents. But, and, and at the next meeting, we will absolutely be ready to talk about staffing issues. You may know, you may have seen it in the news, staffing in law enforcement right now is difficult. It's not, that is not unique to Baltimore. It is nationwide. We're seeing unprecedented amount of folks throughout the country resigning, retiring from law enforcement. And agencies are having very difficult time recruiting new people for all sorts of reasons that we don't necessarily need to get into today, but we will in fact be prepared to talk about that.
Thank you. I, I want to be clear that I don't, I think that just with the details around the crashes, you know, this to me will just help with some of the other, you know, traffic calming work that I'm doing to be able to say, we actually have to address it in this way, not to come up with an auxiliary team or something like that, but to actually try to resolve the issue on our, on our streets as well. So, but yeah, if you don't mind taking the time to get a little bit of that data and we can be offline about some more specifics so that we can be prepared, I really appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
We get that specifically, a specific request. So if maybe you can get to the committee an analysis on how much time officers are spending on accidents and then also a location of locations of the top ten or so streets, is that, would that be appropriate, top ten locations for accidents? I think the idea here would be, one, exploring ways to reduce officers' time, especially at those locations. And then also understanding more, more broadly, what, what the traffic burden is to the police department and what it can mean if we were able to divert those resources toward more the crime fight stuff that, that you guys are the only ones capable of doing.
And Mr. Chair, may I add, we know I eighty-three is going to be one of them. So that will be, we know that, and we're working on that solution, right? So if you could give me the top ten or ask the top ten aside from eighty-three, that would be helpful.
Awesome.
And just go ahead, Kim. You're probably going to say the same thing I am going to.
We do understand it. So we are working with our partners in reference to eighty-three. But we also, you know, when we saw with the beginning of COVID, nationally, there was an increase in fatal automobile accidents. So not wanting to sit back and continue to allow these incidents to happen, we addressed it through our fatal arrest reduction team. So that is a team that we are utilizing out of our special services section where they do go to those hotspot areas and they're identifying them. So this is something that we are proactively working with right now. But we also, because of mitigating circumstances, had to pull them away from that to do other details as well. But there is something that we do have in response to those fatal crashes and accident locations. So we will definitely have a robust response.
And we did change our policy several years ago. We, we eliminated some hit and run accidents that we no longer investigate. So that, that decreased our, our caseload, but unfortunately, people forgot how to drive, I think, when COVID hit.
And, and, and to Rich's point, that's something that we're still constantly doing in reference to looking at all of the calls for service and seeing which calls for service can be diverted to other entities that will best serve that service instead of the police department. So that's something that we're actively doing without communications.
And just to jump in with my colleagues, we're doing as part of the redistricting project that we're working on, obviously, we're doing a workload analysis for everybody, right? So there will be not only just for car accidents, but to see a breakdown of how officers spend their time on all calls, right? So whether it be hospitalized prisoners, car accidents, calls for service, you know, directed patrols. So as part of that, you know, we're going to have a whole big breakout, and I think, you know, that should be coming, you know, somewhat soon as part of this process. So we'll be happy to share that, you know, as we get that.
That would be great. Thank you. And Councilwoman, do you have another question?
No, that's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any, any other questions from the committee on the first part of this portion? Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was a slide that was referenced with homicide arrests for two thousand twenty-one. Can you pull that back up, please? Thank you.
Councilman, is this the one you wanted?
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you, Michelle. Are those for for the hundred and thirty folks arrested in two thousand twenty-one, are those for homicides that were committed in two thousand twenty-one? Or two thousand twenty-one and years past?
No, it's for basically for two thousand twenty, for two thousand twenty-one cases, we arrested ninety-two, ninety-two individuals.
Oh, so the remaining thirty-eight would be for homicides that occurred pre-two thousand twenty-one?
Yes.
Thank you, Colonel. Appreciate it. And I know there was a question about the hundred and eight individuals that were arrested that had a previous record, whether or not they were under the supervision of P and P. So I guess you all were going to follow up with that, correct? Okay. And then just the, the caseload that the homicide detectives have, can you pull that slide back up? Think you all had indicated there was.
Caseload or clearance rate?
Uh, caseload.
I don't think that.
Or did we not? Maybe I'm making that up.
On this, and we have a slide.
Sir, I'm sorry. Real quick, I gave you the wrong, I was lower. I was looking at a different number. It's a hundred and two for ninety, for two thousand twenty-one cases and twenty-eight for, for prior years.
Prior years. Thank you, Colonel. Appreciate it. I'm sorry, I misspoke, Michelle. Can you, can you pull up the one for the clearance rate? So what do we, for, for homicide, you know, fifty-eight percent of people who killed someone are still walking the streets right now. What do we need to do to reduce that number and get us closer to the clearance rate for comparable cities?
I think some of the things that we, that we're doing is, is you've got some new technology. I can't talk enough about Nighthawk, how much we're using that. That's going to help immensely because it's allowing us to do certain things, to link people. And then basically, we, we just got to get cooperation from the citizens. That's the, that's the biggest thing. Just for example, when the, when the triple or the double homicide from the first of the year, we're working on camera footage because we don't really have anybody that, that has said they saw anything. So we, we desperately need help from the citizens to close these cases because the detectives do a phenomenal job. We just don't get a lot of cooperation out of some, some parts of the city.
Oh, go ahead. Is that all, Colonel?
Yes, sir.
I think, you know, to Rich's point, you know, in reference to not only the homicides and non-fatal shootings, but going back to Councilman Conway's point is we've got individuals who have been identified as previously having records and being prob, not really problematic, but having issues. So we have to look at the services that we give these individuals, be it health and wellness, be it mental, behavioral crisis issues. I think there's a whole host of things that we can do sometimes on the front end and the back end in reference to gap filling. I believe that majority of the cases that I know of seem to have a history of where one time it was always drug abuse, or this and this and that, where sometime there are just disturbances that go on in poor conflict resolution and the availability of handguns now turns into a shooting or homicide. Where we need to get that messaging out that, look, there's other ways of mitigating these issues and getting ahead of them. There are individuals who know that unfortunately, their grandson, their son, their uncle, whoever it is, has an illegal handgun in that house. Doesn't, doesn't need to have it. So giving them the hard facts of, look, doesn't need to be here, get it out of my home, those things of turning it over to police. I think there's a lot of things on the front end, but also using the technology through ShotSpotter. Our L P Rs are identifying our public, our problematic individuals that are not worth looking at it always as a cure, but also that soft hand, community youth division, labor services.
Colonel, I apologize for interrupting. You're telling me all the things that we have in place. I'm, I'm asking what we need to do to right-size this number. Do we, do we need more ShotSpotter locations? Do we need more L P R, whether stationary or mobile? What, what tools do we need?
I think, I think we, unfortunately, I think we throw everything at them. I think we do need more ShotSpotters. We need the availability of the ShotSpotters to be properly linked with our cameras. And when it happens, our cameras are spinning right there capturing any individuals that may be fleeing from the scene. I think we do need more of the mobile and stationary L P Rs. I think anything that we can do to help combat this is on the table. You know, we do need that increase and enhance partnership with Metro Crime Stoppers in reference to getting individuals out there of, of providing us the necessary information that we need. I believe everything is on the table for two thousand twenty-two, and I know as an agency, we will not look at a gift, a horse in the mouth. Anything that we can get to better prepare us for two thousand twenty-two is greatly appreciated.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm looking for like, maybe I asked the question the wrong way, and I apologize for that. I'm, I'm trying to understand what, like, what are the tangible things that the police department and city government apparatus can do to right-size this number? Like, what's a, what's a specific tangible thing? Like, is it, we could get six more L P R readers and, and police vehicles? Or we could get, you know, what are those things?
So I, I, I think, you know, and I won't step on, on Graham, and if he can jump in, whatever he wants to. But I think the idea is that we have L P Rs, but the problem is with L P R cars being dead. So we realize that, that sometime it's a, it's a fleet thing of the vehicles that are equipped that can help, help us in reference to identifying problematic individuals in situations where stolen autos or carjack vehicles are out there. We don't have enough vehicles in the fleet because of they're old, that we're trying to get them back on. So a lot of things that can be with D G S and helping us moving forward with that, with the cameras that we do have up that are outdated. Having those cameras that are down fixed, there's a lot of those things. And moving forward as far as technology with the L P Rs, with the more advancing technology that's coming online in reference to law enforcement, I think the push is always going to be places and people. I think we have to identify, you know, those problematic areas that we have and making sure that our officers are there, being proactive and getting engaged, and the districts are properly identifying those individuals at high times, high days, the high priorities to have that presence that we need.
So can we, can we go to, Mr. Chair, can we go to Graham, just, just to understand what's being done to track all these things that Colonel Jones is talking about?
Sure. Yeah. And so, absolutely, sir. I think, let me be very honest, right? I, all I can do is try and make my unit and my department and data better here, right? And I would love to make the clearance rate ninety percent, but all I can do is be better at my job and, and, and know that through that work or our job, and know that that will increase things, right? So I have a vision, there's a plan, right, to get real-time intelligence, right, to the hands of detectives sooner and better and faster over the course of this year, right? So that when there is a shooting, we have information that is in people's hands. Like, I would like to see GPS locations for those on monitoring, right, be available for us so that we can see instantly. Like, if there is a robbery, I can pull it up and see who was at that spot at that time, right? That's something that I need to work with, with probation and the juvenile folks. And so there's a number, and also reporting, right? I want to be better, I want us to be better at reporting both internally and externally in the department. So I think there's a lot of things that we're trying to, obviously, that we're doing, the, the work, the guys, the, the folks, the men and women in the field that are doing tremendous work. And we're just trying to support that through aggregating data. Because the good news is we have a lot of data. The bad news is we have a lot of data.
Right. So it kind of feels like the, the takeaway from this is the bad news is we have a lot of data. And so, for example, when Colonel Jones references that we have, you know, we have fleet issues, right? And there's some mobile L P Rs in, in our fleet and several vehicles in the fleet are down. So what's, what's the story behind that? So where's, where's the emergency procurement that is going out like today before supper time to make sure that we have vehicles, that, that we have enough vehicles in the fleet that, that are mobile, that have the L P R in them, right? So I appreciate that you all are collecting all this data. I'm just, this is a really complicated issue. I'm trying to wrap my head around it. And I'm having trouble wrapping my head around it because there's so many different data points and so many different variables and so many different contingencies and different partners. So I appreciate how complicated your all job is, but I'm having trouble understanding it and what are the tangible things that we're doing to right-size a number? And, and I kind of feel like, you know, I've been asking this question for five or 10 minutes now. I haven't really gotten a, a real answer as to what is it that we can do like today, tomorrow, next week to right-size this number because the, the current number is not an acceptable number because we are, we are essentially failing at protecting citizens while at the same time trying to develop intelligence that we can use to solve cases. So we've got to figure out the things that we can do right now. And that's what I'm trying to understand, if, if anyone can help me understand that.
If, if I could jump in a little bit, yeah, if I could jump in a little bit here, because I think, I, 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 I like the line of question you're taking. And it, it makes me think about a recent conversation I had with one of the, one of the majors, with Major Hobman in the northeast. And one of the things that he said has been a real boon for him has been specifically their ability to clear cases. And he said a big part of it is that they, they've been much more fortunate compared to other districts and that they often are able to find a witness. They don't have too many cases where there's no lead, where it's just someone who's shot in an alley. Those in, in, Colonel Jones alluded to that earlier. When we have those, it kind of leaves us with nothing to really follow or, or, or move on. But when we've got some evidence, we've got witnesses, it, it takes us a long way. He touched on a couple of things. I'm looking at my notes from our conversation. He touched on surveillance, of course, L P R residential, residential cameras, like the rings or whatever, personal doorbells. Those help sometimes. They'll sometimes capture people, many times not, but every once in a while they do. Commercial cameras, cell phones, people often ca, capture stuff because they just happen to be in the area. But one of the big things, and you know, I think he was talking more from his previous experience overseeing the the homicide detectives. He was saying that, you know, the detectives specifically in the Northeast have been doing a really good job getting witnesses and and getting shooting victims also to talk. So it it makes me sort of wonder, what data do we have to sort of compare that difference? Do we have more witnesses? Do we have more victims willing to speak? Is that true or is that just kind of anecdotal? And is there anything to sort of corroborate that? And maybe Graham, you can speak to that from the data perspective. I don't know if we have the data now, but I'm sure we can pull it.
Yeah, so I mean, I can, I'm going to lean on my colleagues here because we can pull the data to see how many witnesses we have because that's field, for example, right? On you would say, how many witnesses do I have? But that doesn't necessarily mean those are real. Like, we get a lot more witnesses who come forward the next morning or call people or, you know, we have the tip lines. So, you know, getting that number in an, you know, I can get one point of data. But in terms of getting the actual point, I want to make sure that I I get that correctly because I think I'm sure Colonel Worley could speak to the the nature of how these investigations evolve over time. And, you know, what we get, that's one of the challenges, right, with ShotSpotter is one of the knots you hear is like, oh, there's not that many field arrests, right? Oh, there's, you know, and yeah, absolutely, right? Because once the system gets known, people aren't probably hanging out at the exact location they fired the shot with their firearm. But there's tons of maybe investigative arrests that happen afterwards. So there's, we have to sort of look holistically at both what happens on the front end when the men and women in the patrol car get there and then what happens at the back end that we're working to tie together.
Yeah, and just from being the major in the Northeast for three and a half years and I was a captain in the Northern, we do get a lot more cooperation. I was an officer in the Western and a sergeant in the Southwest. And the amount of cooperation we get from those districts is is simply phenomenal compared to some of the other, some of the other districts. And then to touch on a couple of other things that Councilman Costello mentioned. We are getting twenty-one new LPR units coming this year. We've got to think eighty cars that are coming in. As we speak, there are actually some of them are getting striped and getting all the equipment. And we just started with three sixty cameras that are coming on. And I think one of the big things that will help us move it into 2022 is the partnership with the state's attorney, Monty, and City Hall with GBRS. The pilot in the Western that we hopefully can move to the rest of the rest of the city. Exciting things are coming. Unfortunately, they can't get here quick enough for all of us.
Colonel, I I appreciate that. That that was exactly the the information I was looking for. And I apologize for not better articulating that from the onset. That's that's the type of stuff I was looking for, and and I'd be curious, you know, not that you may have it now, but similar information for ShotSpotter and and other technologies that we're using.
Yes, sir. I think Graham could help us with ShotSpotter.
And Mr. Chair, if you have to cut me off, I understand. Otherwise, I do have one or two other questions along this line of questioning, but I can wait until the next round. You've been very generous with your time so far.
Sure, I want to give other folks a chance. Any other, any other folks have questions before we start the next round? Councilman Burnett? And Porter, got you right after.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I had a, just a, probably straight into just a data request. I didn't get this in this in ahead of the hearing, but I was I was curious for ShotSpotter. How, if we could provide the committee, how many ShotSpotter alerts came in year-to-date? Or like last year, calendar year, I guess would be helpful for us. And how many of those alerts resulted in an arrest related to the incident that the ShotSpotter alerted the department to? And that same information would be helpful for license plate readers? So how many pings were picked up on the existing readers? And how many resulted in an arrest? And then lastly, for CCTV, so the City Watch Network, obviously, you wouldn't be able to tell us how many, I think these things are recording all the time, but essentially, how many arrests resulted from CCTV? That that was actually all I had, unless there's a clarification needed on on that request.
Nope, ten-four, sir. I think I got you with the ShotSpotter numbers, the.
You kind of you kind of cut out.
I'm sorry, yep. So no, I I understand completely. You want the ShotSpotter information as well as LPR and City Watch either assisted arrests or initiated arrests for.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to take the opportunity to follow up on your question before about parole and probation. I wanted to know if we can add an element, a data element to segment by victims and also perpetrators. So we have a clear understanding of who was on probation, if they were a victim of homicide or if they were a continued perpetrator homicide, because I think that when we're talking about repeat violent offenders and we're talking about really the cycle of of criminal activity in our city, I I think we have to have a greater understanding of how many perpetrators actually turn into victims and how that, you know, how that falls into the larger conversation of violence reduction. And, you know, as we move into this whole violence reduction strategy, that will have a better, that will give us a clearer understanding of how how we can utilize other city services to support those individuals like Safe Streets, like Roca, but also leveraging our city agencies as well along with those, I know that BPD you all are working on as well. So that's all that I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I can actually answer a couple of those right now if you'd like.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Of the three hundred and thirty-eight victims, seventy of them were on parole probation at the time of their murder, nineteen for gun-related cases, forty-two of them were actually a previous non-fatal shooting victim before they were shot a second, at least a second.
Interesting, interesting.
Yes, one hundred and thirty of them have been arrested for violent crimes. Eleven of them were prior homicide suspects.
Okay, that that definitely helps out. And I don't know if this is the avenue to do it, Mr. Chair, if you can just indulge me real quick. But why, I I I understand about like violent repeat offenders, that I'm hearing some of the charges. Were most of them gun gun gun-related or? Like, what was their actual charge?
Are you talking about the ones that were on of the victims?
Yes.
Nineteen were arrested for gun-related offenses.
Nineteen, okay, okay.
On the same line, the same thing, you know, as far as non-fatal shooting victims, you know, we're looking at seven hundred and twenty-nine. I bet seven hundred and twenty-nine, one hundred and sixteen of them were currently on parole probation. Thirty-six of those individuals were on probation for gun-related crimes. And eighty-five of those individuals were fortunately a previous non-fatal shooting victim. So so we can see some of some of that revictimization going on. I know what you mentioned, the police department, we have our victim services advocates that are going out post the homicides, post the non-fatal shootings, reaching out to the victims to see what we can do holistically to provide those resources and fill those gaps. And though through Monty as well, as you mentioned, you know, the Safe Streets and the Rokas and the Yap. I know that there are certain hospitals who are involved as well. They have their victim advocates as well to come out during the incident because they may not be, you know, apt to talk to the police, but they may be able to talk to someone outside of the police in reference to those resources and gaps that.
Thank you so much. And my second question actually has to do with immediate options of curbing those types of issues of crime because we see that level of revictimization on a pretty consistent basis. And I think that this falls in line with Councilman Costello's question, if I was really hearing him correctly, like, some immediate options or immediate avenues for the police department to reduce some of these violent repeat offenders in our community.
Yeah, I know that we we've worked with through our youth and community and our NCOs in reference to giving them those services that they need and try to do that immediately. But unfortunate part of it is we do have a host of individuals who are the victim of a crime who just because of their prior involvement into maybe some other nefarious activity, they don't want to be forward in reference to how they were related to this crime. So sometimes it takes us days, weeks to months of breaking down those barriers of, look, we're not here for that. We just want to know why and how can we help you. So we're working tirelessly to break down those barriers and trying to figure out what's needed after the incident. If it's not us going in there with a soft hand of somebody else, you know, detectives going with softer clothes and stuff like that to give them the resources, sometimes going to those knock and talks to their homes and follow-ups of, look, we really need to help you out. We see a pattern of something going on here. So it is something that we're definitely striving to improve upon.
I see Director Jackson. Did you want to add anything to that? I think this is also probably pretty relevant to Monty.
Yes, I wanted to respond to the councilwoman's question with regard to immediate supports, obviously. When we're dealing with victimization, we've got to be really thoughtful about the intersections, not only between BPD's victim services team, but also what we're doing at a hospital prevention perspective. And so I'm happy to share with with this committee that there is a meeting coming up in the next few weeks with the mayor, the police commissioner, the health commissioner, myself, and all of Baltimore's chief medical officers to have a real conversation about what hospital-based responder programming should look like in our city to support the work that BPD is doing, to make sure that there aren't those of revictimization and retaliation, for that matter, and that this is a part of the ecosystem that we're looking to build out. The other piece that I would add on to is that Monty is partnering with BPD around victim services evaluation, that we're adding a victim, a deeper victim services structure into our agency to account for gun violence victims and survivors of gun violence themselves. And in cases where BPD is unable to make the connections because you've got someone that's been shot that doesn't really want to talk to BPD, we want to make sure that Monty is the bridge to organizations like ROR, which provides direct supports to folks, to organizations like Turnaround, because we have seen them be really successful in in reducing victimization as a result. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think those are all the questions. Councilman Costello, I think you had some follow-up ones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a question about the online reporting. So, for example, you know, if my bike was stolen, normally that would have resulted in an officer coming out and writing a police report. Now, if my bike is stolen, I go online, I report it as stolen and get a police report for purposes of an insurance claim. Are those are those online reports, are those being? I don't want to say deprioritized, but are those being like graded down in terms of severity of of the issue that's being reported?
No, I wouldn't say graded down. I think anytime that there is a UCR or a former UCR crime, of course, we're going to nivise now. Anytime that there's a crime, so what happens is those districts are held accountable. So whether it's in weekly crime calls, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or a comstat, we will bring up, hey, you've had these larceny increases in this area. We show lawsuit from auto increases in this area. What are you doing about those things? So it is definitely something that, you know, although it may not get the priority in the news or whatever else that are homicide and the non-fatal shooting, any crime that impacts a community is sometimes a crime that affects our textbooks. And we realize that. So we don't take anything for granted. It may not have the prioritization of we would be able to move, you know, say MMU or some entity over there because of larceny autos or larceny, but we are ensuring that a district is aware of it and seeing what they're doing. So for that post officer, for those detectives, when that report was taken in reference to a package theft or whatever, is there any pattern, trend, anything that we can go off of? Are we going back to social media? Are we looking into those social media apps that are selling, I believe it's called, I don't know, Facebook Merchant or whatever it is, are we going back to those entities to see, did this bike, did this purse, did this whatever show up on it? So we're giving it definitely the level of follow-up that it is needed based on the totality of all of them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, we're going to move on. And I believe the next part of the hearing will jump into the top ten violent posts. So I'll hand it back over to BPD.
Copy. Michelle, are you going to bring the top ten posts up?
Can we see it?
Yes, we can see it. I just want to give folks a sort of understanding of how this will generally go. I'll give BPD an opportunity to touch on these top ten violent posts, and then we'll dig into each post. As I mentioned earlier, the hope is that as we talk through the issues in these areas, the agencies that have work going on in these areas can speak about their work and how that may tie to the the greater crime fight. So with that, I'll hand it back over.
Thank you, four, sir. So we we realize that, you know, these are the top ten violent areas by post throughout the city. Current list shown here has been identified for the total counts of all violence right now. Today, you know, we have prepared the crime trends for each of these spots, which you can see on these slides. In the following slides, we also have prepared the proactivity of the officers initiated and three-one-one service requests. BPD is very excited to work with our partners with this committee and other resource partners in reference to the comprehensive approaches to reducing violent crimes through the tools like crime prevention through crime signs and building out this process with the committee. One of the components we want to get right is to make sure that we're focusing on the right places in alignment with the SEPTED techniques. With our current methodology, the top ten posts can fluctuate and different crime trends shift across the city. As you see, you know, right now, in the top ten, you will not see the Western District up there because of some of the fluctuation in reference to the neighborhood crime. And you will see that in the Central District, they have, I believe, three or four posted. As we recognize this not to be the the first iteration of this approach for us, we're setting goals with the community going forward. As a result, you know, we want to work with the committee to refine our methodology so that we can make sure that we are focusing on the resources where they will have the most impact in violence for the city, ensuring that we're focused on the right geographies where we also help, will help us to also conduct a deeper problem analysis, which can be shared with our other city partners. Finally, for us, and this BPD, you know, an example of some of the other data that could be incorporated into the problem analysis included at the end of our slide deck, three-one, three thirty-one posts in this, this top ten approach to, I believe, this top ten. So as you can clearly see, we've identified one eleven posts in the Central District all the way down to ten for South Western. It gives you from homicides all the way to rape, a number of incidents that have been reported for the calendar year up to as of twelve fifteen of twenty twenty-one. They said for the, the list below it is also giving you the product productivity of the officers and other entities, be it patrol or support services in those posts. I won't belabor each and every one. You see it for yourself. If you have specific questions, ask those. There's no questions, Michelle. We will go to the next slide. So as we see, you know, one eleven posts, the proactivity for one eleven posts, we show a breakdown of Baker, Charlie, and Adam Schiff's, what they were doing from business checks all the way down to warrant service. It then shows on the far right part of the slide, service requests that were made in reference to potholes, traffic signal repairs, and so on. And this is pretty much the same for each of the other nine top ten posts. And for any specificity in reference to what the district is seeing.
Colonel Jones, do we have, do you have a map of the posts? I think it'll help, one, for the council members, but then especially for the agencies who often don't look at. I think it'll help, one, for the council members, but then especially for the agencies who often don't look at uh, the city in this sort of context.
I believe we provided it before. I don't know if we have that in this slide deck.
It's not in this slide deck, but if you give me a moment, I can uh, pull that up. I I believe we included that in a prior communication. Give me a moment.
Okay, thank you. I think it it would also help, uh, one, to quickly talk through uh, the one eleven posts, what we're seeing, where some of the problem areas are, and then I would I would um, definitely want to open the floor to um, other agencies, D P W, D O T, health, housing, and otherwise, uh, to provide any additional websites, uh, insights on on what we're already doing or or things that we could be doing to uh, address issues here.
Yep, and for that deeper dive into one eleven posts, I'll pass that to uh, Lieutenant Colonel Bart.
Thank you, Colonel. Everyone hear me okay? Very good. So um, everyone will most closely associate this particular post with the block in the four hundred uh, block of East Baltimore Street. We're all uh, quite familiar with it and many challenges it presents uh, from the the type of entertainment establishments that do business there and uh, some of the clientele um, it draws. A lot of uh, we we we've made a a number of handgun violation arrests there here to date. Um, we've of course even uh, sustained a couple of shootings in that particular area. It requires an extraordinary number of police resources, a disproportionate number of police resources. The the Central District on multiple nights of the week um, have to dedicate a a large contingent of officers um, on foot, uh, not only in that block, but the adjacent blocks where um, patrons park their vehicles and often secrete firearms. We have our City Watch team often training their cameras um, in their eyes uh, in that area to watch out for those things, to watch out for for disputes um, that are beginning um, to foment as people come out of the clubs, et cetera. So, um, you know, we, in 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 addition to the the amount of time we spend there um, and the number of arrests we make, uh, Central District Major Featherstone um, is uh, very intentional about the relationships he has uh, in the block. He he's worked a fair amount with with council members. I know um, he talks very positively of of his relationship with Councilman Costello and and the the constant support he provides whenever meetings need to be brokered with those business owners uh, to try to tamp down on the problems. New Year's Eve this year overall was very quiet. The one exception arguably was the block. Um, and we had to keep officers um, who were working New Year's Eve, they were working a seven to three shift. Um, we had to keep them uh, up until five in the morning um, exclusively because of the block. So that's what we're up against.
Awesome, thank you. Um, any um, any of the supporting agencies, D P W, D O T, uh, any any work that we're specifically doing in uh, the um, the one eleven posts? Feel free to speak up. Uh, Ms. Eastman.
There, uh, this is Kelly Eastman, the Baltimore City Health Department. Um, just wanted to note that we do have our needle exchange van that is on the block every week over there at Baltimore and Gay. Um, they're there every Thursday from six thirty to eight thirty. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chair, Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. DHCD does have a a brief presentation about some of the tracking that we've done in all of the top ten police posts. So if it would please the chair, we can do that um, afterwards, um, after the specific discussion of one eleven. For this specific post, we we have very little activity um, related to service request response. I think we had about uh, twenty, but um, whenever you're ready, we'd be happy to dive into that.
Okay, I think um, we will hold off in the meantime, um, because I I I do want to make sure we can get through all of them. But I think where where you feel appropriate, if you think there's a place where we're doing a significant amount of work that would be uh, really helpful towards um, getting to some of the the major issues, please feel free to speak up and we'll make sure to to get that up there. Um, also, it might help um, from BPD to give a little bit more um, texture to the problems that we're seeing. Specifically describe what's going on in the block, what type, what what are the types of problems are we seeing? Are we seeing fights? Are we seeing, uh, and Councilman Costello, I see you sitting up. I'm sure you get these calls every day. Um, so what what types of problems are we seeing and um, how does how does this tie into the the bigger bigger crime fight?
Our our greatest concern, of course, is is the violence. Um, we see robberies there. Occasionally, we see non-fatal shootings. We see other aggravated assaults. Um, this is directly connected to, uh, I believe both the distribution of alcohol, the alcohol consumption in the area by the the patrons who frequent the clubs, uh, the drug use uh, in in and around those clubs, uh, and the prostitution.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is this is Liam Davis, um, representing City D O T. I do know that um, one of our ARPA requests that's being um, considered by the administration would hit primarily uh, post one twenty-three and one one thirty-four. Uh, and that's a lighting upgrade uh, proposal where it would be converting streetlights to LEDs. So that's an example, um, one example of many where we are doing proactive work in and around the city, but specific to these posts being discussed now.
Okay. All right. All right, anything else uh, provided um, from other agencies, things we're working on? And then we'll move on to the next one. Uh, Councilman Costello, I see you got it. You hand up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the other agency's support. As you can see, four of the ten most violent um, posts in the city are are in the Central District, which is in the eleventh Council District. Um, we need additional support from Forestry, um, specifically in post one fourteen. Um, and with respect to um, post one twenty-three, we need additional support from D P W on the Solid Waste Front and Parking Enforcement uh, in the D O T Safety Division.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the the councilman to repeat uh?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yes, um, the the support is is necessary in one, post one twenty-three. Um, up in the Pennsylvania Avenue Corridor from Solid Waste Division. Um, and specifically with Legends Park on the six hundred block of uh, Lawrence Street, directly west of the intersection of Pennsylvania. Um, in addition, uh, we need support from Parking Enforcement in D O T in post one twenty-three. Um, specifically with respect to abandoned vehicles uh, that are being, well, um, I'll end there. We can have the conversation offline as to additional information that's sensitive and shouldn't be discussed in a public setting. Um, we also need support from Forestry Division within Wreck and Parks within post one fourteen. Uh, my team has had to go out and personally cut branches off the trees. I'm happy to do that, but we have a division in the city that does that already um, to uh, ensure that uh, cameras and lights have access to the sidewalk uh, where there are open air drug markets on a regular basis. Thank you.
Councilman Costello, what's what specifically is area in one fourteen?
Me, I've sent the requests historically on a number of occasions. As soon as another request comes up, um, I will be sure to reach out to you. But the usual process at this point is that the District Action Team from the Central District does not get traction from the Forestry Division, so they reach out to me to get that traction. So if we can somehow, you know, improve that coordination and understand that when there's a request for a tree to be trimmed around Lexington Market, it's not because we're worried about the health of the tree. It's because we're worried about an open air drug market that is inevitably going to lead to violence as it did last week when a drug dealer was shot in the middle of the afternoon. So when those requests are coming from those high priority precincts, my understanding is that it's the expectation of the administration that everyone is triaging to ensure that those locations are prioritized. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Thank you, Jenny. Appreciate it.
And and Councilman, this is Marsha again. Um, I appreciate what you're saying about Pennsylvania Avenue. I know we've uh, done several efforts over in there, um, sometimes gone in and and with teams and people too. But um, I will certainly take this back. Thank you.
I really appreciate that, and I know Yvonne and and Braggsdale and the entire Solid Waste Division has been working around the clock there. Um, but it came up, so I'm I'm just pointing out where the areas of need are. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. I think your your intimate con uh, experience and context helps a lot in just kind of zeroing in on the issues. Anything else before we move on to the next one?
Mr. Chair, one last thing I wanted to mention.
Go for it.
I think that um, that uh, Colonel Worley, Lieutenant Colonel Bartonis, and others have alluded to the complexity of the Central District um, in terms of policing. While I only have a limited perspective from only representing the Southern Central in a small sliver of the Western, my estimation, this is by far the most complicated district to police in the city, uh, and it also has one of the lowest populations. So I hope that um, as BPD is thinking about redistricting, um, that there's thought being given to the complexity and diversity of neighborhoods that exist when within this footprint, whether it's the Inner Harbor, the Block, Central Business District, Lexington Market on the West Side, Upton, Pennsylvania Avenue, residential areas like Bolton Hill, Madison Park, Seaton Hill, Mount Vernon with a business district uh, and and residential Resbar Hill, that that proper thought is being given to that. Uh, I know that there are other districts with much larger residential populations, but I hope this is also being taken into consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, yes. All right, without any further additions, we can move on to post three thirty-one.
Yes, sir. Three thirty-one post, um, as indicated by the slide, just to give you this the geographical location of that, it's going to be that Broadway East uh, community within the Eastern District. See by the proactivity types, as far as business checks, directed patrol plans, court officers as well, warrant services on the Charlie shifts, investigative stops. We see at least twenty-five uh, service requests that have been made from October to December. Just giving the little history of this area, we realize that Eastern District suffered a lot of violence in this area. It's to some retaliatory issues. See some entrenched organizations around there. We realize this, working with the Eastern District provided them with a host of non-p patrol uh, resources from SWAT uh, to normal metro teams, to other entities and workers to giving them that necessary push to quell uh, the violence that they've been experiencing, and they've had some recent success with quelling it. But it is definitely one of those areas that's constantly on for the Eastern District. Um, specifically for maybe uh, in depth uh, what the Eastern District is doing.
Thank you. Um, to to that end, uh, any agencies um, doing any work in the three hundred and thirty-first post? Um, and I believe this is uh, Councilman Glover's district, Councilman Glover. I I know you came on, I didn't acknowledge you earlier, and just want to acknowledge you in the meeting. If there's anything else you'd like to add um, to help us better understand some of the issues you're seeing here, I think it'd be helpful.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I can jump in here and just add that uh, in twenty twenty-one, this was a very active area for DHCD code enforcement. Uh, we responded to nine hundred and nineteen service requests, and the medium time to completion of those requests was two days. And we completed those requests a hundred percent on time. So this is a very active area for our team, and when we are able to show you our dashboard a little bit later, you can have a better idea of the types of service requests that we're responding to in the three thirty-one post.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anybody else uh, doing any work in Broadway's?
Mr. Chair, this is Liam from uh, D O T. Uh, this is similar to um, what was discussed in two of the posts from Central District. We do have, again, with our ARPA requests, some streetlight conversions that are planned with that proposal. There's a some additional work that we're doing, si- similar to H C D. Um, after after we go through this kind of each uh, precinct and each post in detail, I would also like to run through um, some really good maps and data that we've put together at D O T, if that's okay.
Um, yes, so um, a question uh, for both Stephanie and for Liam, uh, how how long are your presentations?
It, for me, it would be, I could do it as quick and quick, as quickly as like two or three minutes. It it doesn't have to be long at all.
I think we could do it in five.
Okay. Let let's get uh, any other additional reports. Uh, it may make sense for you guys to just do those additions as well. We we we'll tack them on to the end. How about that? Uh, anyone else have any additions uh, were going on in the Broadway East community?
Hello.
Oh, go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Kelly from the Health Department again. So just a couple of things to note in this post. Um, we have um, embedded a community health advocate in the Hartford Hartford Heights Judy Center over there, and they do community awareness and education on ACEs and trauma and uh, care coordination, support for pregnant postpartum women. And then we also have another needle exchange location at Monford and Biddle here um, every Tuesday from nine AM to eleven AM. Thank you.
All right, anyone else before we move on to one fourteen?
Mr. Chairman, I I can just briefly comment. This is Marsha Collins, D P W. Uh, when we looked back uh, between uh, September first and December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one, uh, this particular post had the most three one one requests, just overall, not just police-driven, but overall. It was over three thousand. Um, and um, the ones that were mentioned on the Police Department slide are illegal dumping, and there were five that they had requested, and I believe that all of the requests that we got from the Police Department we completed within our uh, time period. Uh, but obviously, lighting that Liam is mentioning um, is a is a project that could also help for some of these places that are getting dumped on that, you know, maybe discourages the more random acts of of illegal dumping that might occur in this district. So thank you, Liam, for working on that.
Thank you, Marsha. Um, all right, uh, with that, we will move on to post one fourteen.
So, you know, post one fourteen comes up as the third of the ten uh, top violent posts. Uh, one fourteen, as Councilman Costello alluded to, that's going to be that Park Avenue, Lexington Market. Realize that this is a diverse community in reference to this business district that brings a lot of people uh, to the community. We realize the big prioritization of Lexington Market, working around Hasner and that team of that marketing uh, downtown partnership and the constant presence in this area. Uh, and for myself, um, smart board in my room, Lexington Market area with camera locations that I am constantly monitoring because of the importance I believe this area is, is to the city and the organization of the city, but also being the former major of Central District. organization of the city, but also being the former major of Central District, I realize you know, not only, like many of the districts will give you, will give you crime and community, this gives you businesses, this gives you politicians, this gives you a whole lot of things, a whole choose that you must deal with. That is constantly making you different, post different. So, like I said, with this Lexington Market, anything as far as deeper dive to the Colonel Bartonis we're going to, but I will tell you that one of the biggest problems we have with the Marcus is some affiliated non previously, this had been but it's also open air drug individuals who are excommunicated from other drug locations throughout the city. So if I used to sell drugs somewhere else in the Southwest, for whatever reason, I can no longer sell there, it caused up some kind of conflict. There was open invitation that you could sell market being if you paid the tax. So we have been successful in reference to extracting a lot of those windows, there's a constant focus between not only us, but our partnership with University of Baltimore, as well as other entities like MBTA in reference to those transit hubs. So this is something constantly that the Central District has been focusing on to the point that they actually created a one-fourteen plan how they were to address the crimes and issues of public safety. See, shot in front of you, it gives you the breakdown proactivity for that district, but it's something that is constantly in the Central District.
Thank you, Colonel. I'll kick it back to the supporting agencies. What work do we have going on in the hundred and fourteenth? I imagine it'll be a lot of the same answer, given it's right next door to one-eleventh.
Mr. Chairman, Marcia Collins, again, just in looking at at some of the stats that we had for overall SRS and just looking at what was reported on the police presentation, and graffiti is obviously an issue in this area. And just general dirty street, dirty alley cleaning. I mean, you've got a lot of food prep going on in this area, so we've done a fair amount of rat baitment in these areas. So that's been the preponderance of just by the numbers of our work in this area.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, this is Nina Famas with Government Relations. I just wanted to note that Liam Davis from DOT had to leave and rejoin in his zone as an attendee if he could be elevated.
Okay, yeah. Sam will take care of that. Thank you, Nina.
From the DHCD perspective, in two thousand and twenty-one, we responded to our service requests in a period, an average period of one day. And we did that one hundred percent of the time, and we closed out eighty-eight service requests.
Okay, thank you. Anything else going on in the hundred and fourteenth?
Mr. Chair, this is Liam Davis with City DOT. There's actually a good amount happening. You know, in this area, the city that DOT is constantly doing. It's this area doesn't really, we don't have many of the streetlights that we're seeking with the ARPA requests. But I am pretty familiar with our, like our automated camera program maps, and you will see in the downtown area, for example, just because pretty much every single intersection is signalized. There's a high concentration of red light cameras downtown. And I know that we're we're considering installing an additional one on Howard Street where we've had collisions with the light rail. So that's just like one example of a lot of the stuff we've been been doing in one fourteen, you know, one fourteen and one eleven.
Thank you, Liam. All right, anything else before we move on to post eight thirty-five? All right, we'll move on to post eight thirty-five.
Can you hear me, sir?
Yep.
I think it's a delay when I come off of mute and trying to wait until it catches itself up, so I apologize. So eight thirty-five post is going to be in that southwestern district. Comes in as number five in reference to, and number four in reference to our top ten. Just for those who aren't familiar with eight thirty-five post, this is going to be our Carol South Hilton area of the city. We clearly see here in reference to what the Baker, Charlie, and Adam shifts are doing with the directed patrol plans, increasing those. And I will honestly say, you know, when we see these numbers in reference to what the proactivity is for us, with all of the districts and all of the posts, what we look at is in reference to just because we're seeing it, the impactful isn't the right amount of proactivity for that need, for that area. So this is a constant ebb and flow that we have during our comp step. We sixty where we're asking, we see this, but it's the right dosage of what you need to have. So clearly, as you can see with the Charlie shift and the warrant service, fifty-four individuals clearly out there outside of the car targeting open arrest rules, which we know is a priority for for all of us within the city. Reference to our three-one-one calls for service through several months total of six, I saw those for this post officer, those entities that are also
Thank you, Colonel Jones. I want to kick it off to the agencies for support that we're already providing, but I'm also curious, do we have someone from the Planning Department here?
Yes, my armband.
Oh, hi.
Clark is on.
Excellent, thank you. Tamara, I appreciate you. I'm really curious from a planning perspective, realizing that there are certain sort of pressures on these same posts. How have we been thinking about this from a planning perspective? Oh, excuse me?
I think there is a lag. Are you meaning about Septed in general?
Exactly, yes.
Sure. So I can speak a little bit in general about what we do. And that we're a little bit different than the other agencies in that we don't respond to three-one-one calls directly. But we do approach Septed, I think, in a variety of ways. I'll first start off with the Community Planning Division. Because that's our division that our planners work with, probably a lot of people that are actually on this call right now. You know, at the neighborhood level in terms of coming up with neighborhood strategies. So that neighborhood strategy could actually be a range of things. We work with Liam and the Department of Transportation in looking at where lighting might be best. We work with DPW in the communities, you know, directly in identifying areas for dumping, for grass cutting, and DHCD, oh my gosh, we're like joined at the hip. I think in terms of coming up with redevelopment strategies. And the redevelopment strategies are actually really, really important because they lend themselves. I know people don't like to talk a lot about acquisition and different things like that, but when you're talking about redevelopment in areas that have extremely high vacancy, you have to be very smart and, you know, strategic about where you want development, where you want open space, all of these different things. And we work with DHCD to identify not only how we need to do land assembly, so it might be land that goes out for an RFP for multifamily, it might be something that goes out for, you know, just rehab. So it's all of these different things. I mean, maybe land, and we've done this in the past, working with DHCD at Wreckin Parks and identify where new parks might actually be so that we can get the land transferred over to Wreckin Park. So we do all of these different things. The biggest thing in that is it gets land back into active use. So when things are really kind of laying fallow, that's when, you know, a lot of crime can breed itself. That's when, you know, it's more pressure on DPW and DHCD to keep the dumping down, you know, so you're giving money for vacant land that's not in productive use. So when, once you get it back, then you begin to get the eyes on the street. You begin to get that natural surveillance. You begin to get these things. So that's kind of one problem. The other piece that we do that a lot of people don't really think about because it's just kind of routine for us is our land use in Urban Design Division. That's the division that actually reviews development projects that come through the city. So with that, it's a couple of things. It's not only on the private land, but as we're working with developers, we're actually talking about the public right of way. We don't have a lot of control over the public right of way at all. But we can, you know, require the street trains. We can work with DOT in modifying intersections if it's warranted because of a certain scale project or something like that. The other thing that we do routinely in our design review and in tight plan review is when we're actually talking about the details of a project, we are discussing with them the lighting plan that they're doing. We do actually, I can, I can think of several projects where we're saying, how do you think people are going to walk? You know, they're going to be coming here at ten PM, so what kind of lighting are you using to actually light this this section or the sidewalk? We talk about sightlines. Are you planting a fence or a low wall? How this wall is too high? I can think of a project on Park Heights Avenue where we had this conversation about a planned wall on a development project. And one of the actual discussions that we had in our design meeting was, oh, maybe think about not doing a solid wall because that becomes a place where you can hide needles. That becomes a place where someone can hide. So we do have these kinds of discussions, actually at a very detailed level for development projects, so that whatever we're doing, you know, kind of on the private land side, it can actually help the public side. And the other piece that we do work a lot with DOT and, you know, their Complete Streets Committee, we're on those committees. So we do give our feedback. We worked with the Department of Health years ago, I think earlier. Sorry, I don't remember the name of the person from VPD that talked about, you know, I think it was for the block, all of the different alcohol, the abundance of alcohol and all of these different things. So if you recall in transform Baltimore, we worked with the Health Department to really kind of reduce the number of alcohol establishments in the city and get them right. So we come at it from a different perspective than probably most of the other agencies, but we do bring that Septed lens to the table as well.
That's super helpful. Thank you, Tamara. I, I sort of wonder, you talked about some of the community plans. I wonder how many of the communities, neighborhoods, and otherwise within these these posts have plans or would be open to creating plans that can begin to start to look at these issues because they're different for every post. I remember when we spoke about this in our last hearing in the three hundred and thirty-first post, there's a lot more of a vacancy issue that was leading to sort of the blight and therefore a lot of the violence. Just kind of associated in some of these other areas, you know, we've got businesses that, you know, lead to tons of folks on the street and maybe then result in fights or whatever, who knows? But the approach may be different for each one, and I think having the community be a part of that plan from the beginning to start to address some of those issues may be part of the solution there, but really helpful to hear that background.
We can look and see where there's overlap. I remember at the last hearing before the holidays, Kate Edwards from BHCD mentioned that they're working with us on the impact investment areas. So we actually have on my team, a design planner that works with them to do the visioning. So we do have work that is being done on the impact investment areas. Some of the neighborhoods, and I'm just looking at the maps as they they go on the screen, do have plans. We won't be able to do plans, of course, for all the the coverage areas, but we do have some older plans that maybe could be updated. There's some newer plans that are being worked on. So things are kind of in a variety of, I guess, places. Now, things that I know we've done in the past, you know, I'll say back when I was a community planner, I'm not sure how much is happening now, but we did work with the Police Department fairly often on even things such as changing street directions. You know, that's a lot of work that we can't, we can't do. A lot of times you'll hear neighborhoods say, oh, I want this to go, the street to go one way or this. So we did have conversations in the past with different patrol officers and different sectors to say, oh, does this make sense? Does this work for you? So those are the types of conversations that we can have. We do know that we've been involved with discussions around drug treatment facilities where there's just a proliferation of people. Where even, you know, where you put speed humps and speed bumps, like those are our things that we've always had discussions with with DOT and the police because we don't deal with crime in the way that they do or the needs that they have. But we understand and know that sometimes they have to get where they're going pretty fast. You know, and are we proposing what would be a deterrent or is it an emergency route? So we are happy to have those kinds of conversations and collaborate to make sure that whatever efforts we're thinking about actually makes sense.
Thank you. Anyone else want to chip in from the agencies on work that's going on in the eight hundred and thirty-fifth post?
Chairman, this is Nick Wilson from the Pomoni. I wanted to share two updates from this post eight thirty-five. We do operate a safe street site in this post, the Franklin Square Safe Street Site. It has provided over two hundred mediations that could have led to deadly violence. So we're proud of that work. And we've also launched a new effort. You might have, we've talked about it briefly before, the Neighborhood Policing Plans in partnership with the Baltimore Police Department, as well as by its street outreach and community partners. We do have a pilot there. It's one or two pilots. The other pilot is in Brooklyn, Curtis Bay, which isn't in the top ten posts, but has been of extra significance since the shooting of Officer Holly. So we're continuing to finish up that pilot and take a lesson we've learned from it, where we empower residents, local residents, to kind of manage safety for themselves, whether this is through a community cleanups or recognizing certain criminal genetic areas that need to be addressed. And we're very grateful for a lot of the agency partners that are on this call who have come to these community meetings, these cleanups, followed up with priority reports. And once that pilot's done, we'll come back to this group and let you know about expansion and kind of adaptation. Those two things we wanted to briefly highlight.
Thanks, Nick. Anyone else?
Chairman, this is Jason Haswood, DHCD.
Okay.
I just want to add in, you know, we have done a considerable amount of whole block demolition within the E thirty-five post, and we have some more scheduled throughout this year into next year. I think we have like nine groups of properties and six of those are either whole or half block demolitions in some of the more crime-ridden areas.
Thank you, Jason. All right, anything else going on before we move on?
Mr. Chair, this is Liam Davis with DOT. This is, this is another area that is also getting some LED conversions through our ARPA requests. And then I also came to mind to mention our recent RACE grant, successful RACE grant bid. And just looking at the the RACE grant, kind of the route that's proposed for transit prioritization, improvements to bus shelters, ADA improvements, dedicated bus lanes. Not only does it hit this particular post, but it hits, I believe, an additional four that we're discussing today. So you know, definitely a lot going on here as well. So, you know, definitely a lot going on here as well in the DOT side of things.
That's great for the LED project. What's, do we have a timeline, rough timeline on that?
So I talked to our maintenance division today and my understanding is we're expected to hear back from the administration in March as far as the status of our proposal. We did get a council sponsor and Councilwoman McCray, which we are very, Councilwoman McCray, who are, we are very appreciative of her support. So March will have a better idea of timeline.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the, on post eight thirty-five before we move on? Okay, with that, we'll move on to post one twenty-three.
Fifth of the ten is one twenty-three post. Councilman Costello alluded to this, that one, that Upton area. So you're talking about Pennsylvania Avenue Corridor. It's mentioned briefly to one of my staffers, my pet peeve of that Pency and Lawrence area. It's constantly branded in my mind when I hear it and I get upset when there's some violence there because I know that it's something that definitely needed a permanent police presence indicative upon the district commanders to realize this and the ship commanders that even one twenty, one twenty-three post officer, if for whatever reason has to be pulled off of that post, they need to be cognizant of either the post being shifted over to that or having a supervisor actually be responsible until that unit is clear. To, to further that, it's something that city watch cameras should also be alerted if the propensity of something going on. Post officer may have to be capable, may be asking for support to be provided. It is one of our main thoroughfares with that Pennsylvania Veterans Association, the Pennsylvania Avenue Corridor. But also the fact that, you know, it's, it's a major event hub with the MTA Transit and Traffic and being just up the street from what used to be Shake and Bake Location. So we did have that quad, Oupton incident a couple of weeks ago, the end of the year, right there at that park. So we know the importance of not only individuals being susceptible to violence, but because of the large gatherings there that it's a potential result of a difference there. We see clearly here the large number of business checks and directed patrol plans. Counterbalance of all of that as well as foot because we realize that when we do have the business checks and the foot, it then pushes some of the potential, potential crime into displacement areas. So that's where you can kind of catch those issues with the directed patrol plan that addresses those buffer areas. That area received as of the date between October and December, seven SROs for various things in community. As the councilman alluded to, always concerns to our cameras in the foliage. Wetter time and the leaves fall off, great, but then when spring, summer comes around, foliage comes back and then shoot camera and then we. Press for dead trees. Specific questions I would.
Thank you, Colonel. Anything else on this from the supporting agencies? I know Councilman Costello gave a ton of insight, additional insight and folks did speak to some of this. Anything we missed on post one hundred and twenty-three?
Mr. Chair, Stephanie Murdoch, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. I just wanted to add that this was in one of our, is in one of our impact investment areas that currently has one community catalyst grant, seventeen demolitions, recent demolitions. Three home buying incentives were awarded. There was one relocation, six stabilizations, and we have eleven properties in active receivership. So this is a high priority area for the agency as well. Additionally, as far as our service requests that are being handled by code enforcement in 2021, we closed 497 requests of median day of one to completion, and that was done 100% of the time.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, this is Marsha Collins, DPW. This particular post had a pretty high number of boarding requests. There were seventy-nine that we saw that was pretty high. And it also has just some general street, dirty street and alley requests that are up there in, in number, rat rub out and graffiti. So it's based on just what I'm hearing from HCD and our number of boardings, I'm not surprised by these other high numbers.
Thank you, Marsha. Anything else to add?
This is Liam from City DOT, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to highlight for Upton and actually neighboring communities, Sandtown Winchester and Druid Heights, those communities have been selected for proactive community traffic calming, planning, or excuse me, plan. It's part of one of the newer kind of capital programs under, under the current budget year. So that's, there, there's actually meetings that are being scheduled for, that have already occurred but are also still being planned for this month to engage the community to talk about traffic calming needs specifically in Upton and those two adjacent neighborhoods.
Awesome. Thank you, Liam. Anyone else?
Hello, Kelly from the Health Department and for, for the Health Department for post one twenty-three. We do have one of our Be More For Healthy Babies community sites in this post. They do prenatal mom's club education and support groups, circle of security parenting groups, which discuss prevention of abuse and neglect, prenatal and postpartum case management, community outreach engagement, peer leadership program. And then not, not in the post exactly, but very close is our Druid Clinic as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, if there is no one else, we'll move on to post two twenty-one. Oh, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. One, I want to thank Health Department and Be More For Healthy Babies unbelievable numbers in terms of reducing infant mortality rate. And Liam, your shop with the proactive traffic calming efforts, especially along the Fremont Avenue corridors, appreciated. Jeff Featherstone is, is in my mind, the best major in, in Baltimore City covering any of the nine districts, although I don't have the pleasure of working with another seven of them. He's too much of a professional to say it, so, so I'll say it for him. We are not getting the appropriate level of support from MTA, MTA, Colonel Jones. And I know you know that from your time as major in the Central District many years ago. So if there's anything that could be done to increase MTA support, because Major Featherstone is somehow figuring out a way to make lemonade every single day out of a pile of Splenda packets and water. And I'm not sure how he's doing that, but he's playing whack-a-mole across that district. Whether you're talking about the violence on that Lawrence Avenue stretch up on the, in between seventeen, eighteen hundred blocks of Pency, or whether you're talking about the Dolphin Street Corridor in between the eleven hundred and twelve hundred, and then that activity just gets displaced, moves eastbound into Druid Heights. In terms of Health Department and DPW, something that I've been asking for, for some time is to try and figure out a solution for how the city can start to pick up needles that are on the ground. We currently don't offer that service. I strongly believe it's a service that, that we should offer. DPW, in terms of the boarding requests, really appreciate what Toya Sykes Coats and her team have been able to do. One of the problems that we have is that there are certain properties that once they are boarded with three quarter inch plywood, plywood is taken down because it doesn't take much more than a hammer to take that down. We have one property in Seaton Hill, which has been boarded by Toya's team now four times in the past two months where I've requested cinder block or brick be put up. And the response that I've received is that that's not something that the city does. At some point, I would imagine we have to do a cost benefit analysis of putting up plywood time after time after time on the same address before we decide to cinder block the property in order to keep out squatters, in order to keep out drug dealing and drug usage, as well as to prevent potential fires. For, with respect to BCRP, in terms of Legends Park, that park right now, until we get to the point, which I think Colonel Jones acknowledged, and Colonel, please correct me if I'm putting words in your mouth, but this part of the city does require 24/7 constant police presence. Not eighteen hours a day, not twenty hours a day, 24/7, 365 presence. I know we are limited on resources, so I'm not coming to ask for that. What I will say is that Legends Park has become a breeding ground for violence, and I think it would be appropriate, this is to Wreckin Parks, to have that entire park fenced off. A lot of that violence is stemming from what are posed as community food distribution events that are occurring in the daytime, which is causing conflict and resulting in violence that's occurring later in the day. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other agencies have responses to anything stated by Councilman Costello or any additional points to make on post one twenty-three?
Mr. Chairman, Marsha Collins, Department of Public Works. I respect the Councilman's comments. Blocking up of windows was a fire department issue. So I think that's something that we could certainly have conversations with you, with Fire Department and DPW. I don't believe it was a cost issue. It was, it was the fact that the fire department didn't want these openings blocked up because if there's a fire, they have difficulty gaining entrance. But that doesn't address your concern about being able to keep the boarded up areas.
That's really, that's really helpful context, Marsha. And in all my conversations, I wasn't aware of that and didn't come to think of that on my own. So yeah, if, if TPW could have a conversation with fire for some of these more problematic properties, that would be greatly appreciated. And as you know, we don't board, DPW, your team doesn't board the second floor, which is a problem in some instances. So if there's an opportunity to pick that service up in unique instances where it's necessary, that may be something that the department considers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, we, we sometimes are able to do the second story if it's not structurally unsafe to do so. We don't have cherry pickers, as I call them, available to us. So sometimes access is the primary issue, but thank you. I, I totally respect what you're saying in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. I thank you both. With that, if there are no additional comments, we'll move on to our next post, two twenty-one. And hand it off to BPD.
Yes, sir. Two twenty-one post comes in number six. For those who are situational awareness, this is going to be Keldery Park, Highland area of the southeastern district. What we've seen is an increase in the violence in this border area that is shared with the eastern district. I will say that there has been what you would see as increase of foot along the Lyman Street Corridor and the other eastern, you'll see the direct opposite response for Keldery Park in the southeast by directed patrol because they get a lot of that push and that buffer zone issues between the two and then that Highland area. So if you see by the proactivity chart, all three shifts with business checks in the hundreds, directed patrol plans within the four hundred and or greater. I would want to see some increase on that foot patrol for that bigger shift comparing to the added with the Charlie shifts. All three shifts have shown handgun violations within that area. And then in a double digits in reference to traffic stops for that area specifically relating to those SROs. Five reported between the time span of October and December, formerly being the captain in the southeastern district when I first got promoted in, I believe, seventeen. This has been a problematic area for a while. Joyce Dofsky was the CRC president. This has been a push of hers. Who lives, lives in that area, that buffer. So it is something that has constantly been on the southeastern district team. Reference to putting a least presence in that area. Them with some ancillary mobile metro teams as well as street refresh reduction teams, some K-NOM. When possible, because this is one of those problematic, problematic areas for that district and continues to be, but we realize that until we get some intrinsic areas addressed, like you said, that, that low hanging fruit of environmental disaster, quality of life issues that sometimes can lead to crime. This is definitely been a hot button for that southeastern district. And anything as far as specifics of which driving some of those things, if questions are there, again, refer to cover.
Thank you, Colonel. I, I also want to encourage, if, if committee members, if you have any questions, please just shout out. I can't see you until, not while the presentation is up. Feel free to just shout out and I'll acknowledge you. To that end, I'll hand off to supporting agencies. If you guys have any work going on in the two twenty-one posts, it'd be helpful.
Hi, good afternoon again, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, Stephanie Murdoch with the HCD. As far as post two twenty-one is concerned, one of the inciting, exciting things about that post, out of the, out of the ten, we've awarded ten home buying incentives in that area. We've also conducted two stabilizations and there are nine active receiverships underway. As far as the DHCD's response to code enforcement service requests in 2021, we were able to close out 700 requests in two days is the median response time. And we were able to accomplish that goal 100% of the time.
Okay, anyone else?
So Nick Wilson from Monsey. The two twenty-one also houses our very first Safe Streets Baltimore site in 2007. When we brought your violence model to Baltimore, our first site was McHale Jury Park. And in two, in 2021, the, there was over 200 toward the mediations on the site.
Thanks, Nick.
Mr. Chair, this is Liam Davis, DOT, two twenty-one, both two twenty-one and two twelve also fall within the footprint of our Raze Grant, east-west transit prioritization corridor, which again, we're talking dedicated bus lanes, ADA improvements, bus shelter improvements, et cetera.
Awesome. Thanks, Liam. Anyone else before we move on?
Mr. Chairman, Marsha Collins again, DPW. This is, this post is another high boarding post. We had fifty-eight that we did in this area, second only to the Upton area, Pennsylvania Avenue area. And we did have a high amount of dirty alley requests. We did a lot of proactive cleaning of street and alleys in that area as much as we could. And rat rub out as well. So it's, it's a battle of cleaning and boarding in this community.
This is, that's an interesting, that we see that two of these posts are, of course, two of the places. And that we see that two of these posts are, of course, two of the places with the highest number of vacancies. Um, I sort of wonder what we could be doing from H D's perspective and from planning's perspective. Uh, to continue to spur investment in these areas and hopefully turn some of those vacant buildings into occupied buildings.
Well, I know when we had our last hearing and and I think it was December fifteen. Uh, Councilwoman Ramos brought up the issue of the tipping. Um, the what they found in the B N I A uh statistics that once you reach seven percent or less of vacancies. Uh, communities had a high stabilization rate and uh. Uh, so I think this is, you know, reflected in the kinds of work that we do in a supporting manner um with the B P D. So. I just wanted to bring that up. I I found that to be a very interesting statistic that she shared.
And just to add on to um those comments, um, as D P W mentioned. Um, we do have a high number of V B Ns in that area, but we also have a high number of vacant building notices being rehabbed. Uh, we have two hundred and thirty two of V B N rehabs and uh two hundred and fifteen properties under permit. So we are seeing movement in that area, positive movement.
That's great, Stephanie. Thank you for sharing that.
Yes, thank you very much. It's great.
That's good to know. And um, you said, Stephanie, we had a couple of two programs going on in this area as well to spur that investment. Is that correct?
I don't know if I mentioned particular programs. Um, I was noting the high number of vacant buildings that have been rehabbed. Oh, I did mention the ten home buying incentives that were awarded in that area.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. All right, anyone else on uh two twenty one before we move on to next post nine twenty two? All right, on to nine twenty two. I hand it off to B P D.
Ten four, sir. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Ten four. So nine twenty two post um is going to be in that Southern District, uh Cherry Hill. Um, it has uh. Had seen success before in that Cherry Hill where they, you know, no acts of homicides within Cherry Hill for a while, but then. Unfortunately, there had been several acts uh within the last year um in reference to Cherry Hill. Um, that is a robust uh community um that I'm very familiar with growing up in the city and had family and friends living there. So I I know. The ins and outs of Cherry Hill and and how um it has a a strong um. Community base in that area and people who are engaged and and are are providing information to us and being supportive of our efforts in that area. As you can see by the uh proactive responses from the district in reference to this post. Um, uh, a lion's share of business checks are when the businesses are open during that baker shift. Nearly uh four hundred uh business checks. Uh, all three shifts are showing. Over a hundred incidents of uh directed patrol plans. Uh, I I am concerned in reference to, of course, uh, you know, the lack of field interviews on on Baker and Adam shift, but we know that that comes with. Uh, reasonable suspicion probable cause. But, you know, I would just wonder like zero for the whole timeframe. Is a is a is a concern I would like to dig a little bit deeper for myself into that. Um, and also, you know, what is going on in reference to, we know with the level of violence, but not having handgun violations in it. Refresh to see that almost a hundred traffic stops within uh baker shift. Forty one ser warrant services along. Charlie shift. Um, what I will say is of all of the. Top ten areas within the city, there is a robust uh S R O program going in here. So the officers are getting it. Also, they're probably filling out the information correctly. We did uh note that there were some issues in reference to uh. Process where officers were putting in uh names and not their sequence numbers. Um, so uh. The email address.
You define S R O.
Yeah, the S R Os that were coming in. Um, but we do see twenty nine S R Os in this area. Uh, everything from uh B G E streetlights out all the way to exterior water leak. So it's a robust. Uh, hodgepodge of different S R Os that were coming in from.
Oh, you mean S R s.
S R s. Yes, I'm sorry. S R s. Yes.
Uh, sorry, I misunderstood you. Uh, that that's super helpful. I I'm also just kind of looking at amongst the top ten posts, um. Nine twenty two had the second fewest homicides, but the most shootings. Um, which is interesting to me. Um, it tells me one thing that maybe we're not seeing a lot of deaths there now comparatively. But um, this is literally a matter of aim.
It is. I I think, you know, it's been said before that, you know, when you. Fatal shooting, it is just a missed opportunity to 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 want more, whether it be a homicide. Uh, to show a message. So I so I definitely hear what you're saying. I know that. That is a a intrinsic community, although they care a lot of the uh beefs that go on inside of Cherry Hill or Cherry Hill beefs. Um, so they're well aware of what's going on in reference to either those drug trafficking organizations or those internal conflicts. So. Um, it's one of those areas where you have to have that constant presence of patrol officers and with that team. Um, as well as our other community partners in reference to uh as well as, and I know Monty will probably get into it, the safe streets. Uh, up there of being those violent interrupters in reference to the propensity of what that area can become. So we also. Often have to keep ourselves abreast of this Cherry Hill.
Uh, with that, I think we can just go ahead and hand off because I'm sure Monty um. Will will have a little bit to add on uh safe streets and how that program's going in in Cherry Hill.
Thank you, Nick Wilson from Monsey for the record, and appreciate the Police Department um highlighting uh some of the successes and challenges that our Safe Streets site has seen in Cherry Hill. Um, maybe you'll remember that just the week after our Safe Streets Cherry Hall Hill uh site celebrated a whole year. Um, without any homicides in the encampment area that Keniel Wilson, um, one of the many uh was shot and killed. Um, doing what he did best, which was trying to keep that community safe that he lived in and knew well and worked in for many years. And so. Um, we had a lot to celebrate and a lot to mourn in a short period of time. Um, but appreciated. Um, although offering a support from City Council, from B P D and from our partners, um, but it hasn't deterred our site from. Continuing to do this important work because we've seen the Cherry Hill site um in passive evaluations of. A really outsized impact on bounce reduction and continue to do that um despite these obstacles.
Yeah, thank you, Nick. And I I definitely say uh safe streets down there is really sort of been a model and um certainly has had its uh. Good days and bad days, but has been, I think, for the for the rest of the city and and folks have been trying to replicate a lot of the work going on there. Um, of course, we're still seeing a high number of shootings. Um, and we're still trying to, you know, stay on top of those issues. But yeah, thank you. Any other agencies have additional work going on in uh in in that that post, the nine twenty second?
Um, Mr. Chair, this is Liam, excuse me, with D O T. And uh, this area, we've had a number of projects. Um. I know that there were some resurfacing projects we've done uh this year. Um, and then the new schools that were construction constructed in Cherry Hill uh recently. You know, those receive um kind of the separate inspire investment. So you'll see stuff like new sidewalks. Um, freshly painted, um. Uh, crosswalks, that that type of stuff has been completed by D O T and in and around this post.
That's great. So uh, the inspire funding that sort of saved Russ's school type stuff, that that stuff has already been uh implemented.
Yeah, yeah, those. So those schools were some of the earliest. Um, that were completed under Twenty First Century. Schools program. So all the inspire work should be done. Now, this, the resurfacing we did um this year was separate. Um, and I know the, it might not be done now, but it it it's it's scheduled to be done. I'm just, I haven't been down there to see it myself. But I know the the road servicing, the newer Rundle. Elementary, middle, that's that's one that was slated to be resurfaced this year. Or this past year, excuse me.
Awesome. Thanks, Liam. Anyone else? Housing D V W.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Marsha Collins, D P W. Um. In looking at our S R s in this area, we've done a fair amount of proactive rad abatement in the community. Um, that was one of the higher um numbers that we had. Separate apart from this, I know that we have been working with the Cherry Hill community and we are. Um, looking at flooding issues um that they have in that area and uh several projects that we think will reduce the frequency. Or uh depth of the flooding that they've been experiencing. So. Going forward, we hope to to address those problems that has been plaguing that community for some time.
How about um it other other blood issues like illegal dumping, streets, any of that? And Council, Councilman Porter, I see you. Uh, if you if you have something you want to add, please feel free to jump in.
Yeah, if you um, uh, Director Collins, if you can speak to, um, you know, I know the flooding has been primarily centralized in Cherry Hill, but. There are other communities like Violetville, Lakeland, um, some of the other communities that are experiencing those type of floodings. Have you all um? And and which impact public, the public safety infrastructure as well? Have you all been in conversations about how you can um? Not only connect those communities, but also um what are some of those other communities to do? Uh, because I see only post nine twenty two in the Cherry Hill areas mentioned here, but the issues that you're describing are all across District ten.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, I don't have a full list of all of the uh investigations that we've done. But I I agree with you that that it is more than just that immediate Cherry Hill area. Um, and we have been looking at a lot of locations, both here and other points of the city where. Um, the flooding may not be tidal, it may be um illubial. Um, so that's that's been an effort that has been going on. Uh, for quite a while. I will, I will check for you and get back to you on specifics for those areas you mentioned.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, Councilwoman, before we open it back to agencies?
Uh, no, I I would rather hear from other agencies and as if if a particular agency that I have on my list doesn't um chime in, then I'll chime back in.
Sure. All right, anybody else um ready to jump in? All right, I'm hearing crickets. So uh, Councilman Porter, anyone you specifically have questions for?
Sure, um, similar to other um council members, um Parking Authority, um Wreckin Parks, um. D O T, M T A, those are all issues down in this district that are impacting public safety. Um, is there anybody, I mean, and also the needle exchange as well. I know Violetville and Marl Park um are in desperate need of those types of services. And I know we have the needle exchange through the Health Department. Um, I'm wondering if that can be um enhanced and also um be more robust in these areas as well. Because not only in District ten are we dealing with um violent crime, we're also dealing with um public health emergencies like um addiction, substance abuse prostitution. That that are substantiated through these different issues as well. So. It and and I don't know, I'm pretty sure we don't have these agencies represented on the phone, but if there can be some sort of connection or connectivity between those agencies. Um, as a collective, I think that would be really, really helpful with the Police Department because, you know, oftentimes. Um, police officers are dispatched to these incidences and. Often, more often than not, there is um not much that can be done from a Police Department perspective. Oftentimes, there are other agencies at play here. And so. Um, I just hope that moving forward, we can. Continue to work together and work collaboratively and work on um connected um resources for post nine twenty two.
Uh, Councilwoman, this is Liam Davis with D O T and you just hearing you talk kind of brought to mind one of our major projects. That is currently in planning for this post, and that's this Patapsco Avenue streetscaping. Um, so that's something I'm I'm really excited about because we do get a. Excuse me?
No, I was agreeing with you.
Oh, okay. Um, I know we get a lot of complaints about the roadway condition. Um, and so. That will be addressed um within the project area. Uh, and it it does seem to fit nicely within this post. Um, and there'll also be traffic calming implemented within that as well. So super excited.
Yeah, I'm super excited about that, Liam, as well. Um, you know, just to piggyback off that, if if there can also be further consideration to other. Um, neighborhoods that need traffic calming, um, as well that, you know, are not in the Patapsco Road area, but but surrounding and connected to the Patapsco Road area, namely. Um, you have the uh Harbor West Collaborative Area and Appleish Road. You have traffic calming that we've been kind of really. Initiating and trying to get um some sort of traction on in Pig Town. I mean, there there's a, there's many neighborhoods that are connected to this. And so I hope that when we're thinking about these. Um, initiatives and not to not to beat on you, but I hope that when we're thinking about these initiatives, we're not just solely focused on um the Police Department posts. We're looking at the connectivity between the neighborhoods and also um. You know, other projects that are in the area as well that that are. Not centralized to post one nine twenty two.
And I just want to say, I agree one hundred percent. And one of the things, like if we have time at the end when I can look at it. Uh, what I want to show the committee today is our Complete Streets Annual Report, which I think is super transparent. There is some crossover with the posts, um, but really. You know, I'll talk about it more when we get there, but I hear you loud and clear, and we do have multiple things cooking. Um, and I think good news to share as we get closer to the twenty twenty two construction season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you both. Uh, anyone else have anything to add before we move on to our next post six thirty one? All right, uh, I'll hand it off to B P D and we can uh hit on six thirty one.
Yes, sir. Uh, six thirty one post is ranking at number eight right now in the Northwest District. Geographically, it's going to be that Fall Staff area. Um, we see that there is for proactivity in that area. All three shifts, three hundred incidents for business checks, over a hun- hundred incidents in reference to directed patrol plans. Um, I personally see that there's room for improvement on that baker shift for foot patrol within that area. If it is a priority and then with the Police Commissioner's plan in reference to. Proper dosage of foot in the area, um, that baker shift is just, you know, this is remarkable in that. But I'm also, you know, encouraged to see that uh some of the struggling that most districts have with that Adam shift and proactivity that you see, you know. Thirty thirty incidents of traffic stops within that midnight shift to show me that, you know, they're out there, they're engaged in reference to those uh early morning hours. As well as the Charlie and the Adam shift for their warrant services. The six thirty one post um has provided. S R s service requests ranging from B G E lights out uh down to parking and abandoned vehicles. We know. That this area is is essential in reference to um uh the the Northwestern District as far as that Belvedere Corridor. Fall staff, um, it's very integral in reference to a lot of that sometimes occurs along those thoroughfares. We uh consistently provided the Northwestern District. Patrol resources that come uh from our. Not Belvedere, uh, come from our K nine unit as well as some. Side entities from the Federal Fresh Reduction Team. In reference to some incidents that they've been having in reference to car clubs as well as we know historically that wall bash area. Polythic in reference to uh racing along there. So I know the district is proactive in looking at. Calming initiatives in reference to uh those main. The specifics, if necessary, we turn the phone off.
Thank you, Colonel Jones. And I think it's important to note here that for this particular post, it's not so much shootings and homicides, but it looks like commercial robberies, street robberies a little bit, and especially aggravated assaults are especially high. So just food for thought is agencies are thinking about what types of problems we're especially seeing in this post. I'll hand it off to agencies. If you have something to add, please speak up on what's going on in post six thirty-one.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdoch again from DHCD. I just wanted to add that this was out of the ten kind of lower on the list as far as the number of service requests. We had ninety-four in fiscal year 2021. The median time to completion was three days and we completed them about ninety percent, ninety-seven percent of the time on time. So comparative to some of the other posts, a little bit less code enforcement activity, but we are certainly still out there responding to those complaints as they come into the system.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. And we'll move on. We'll move on to post one thirty-four, our second to last post, and I'll hand it back over to Colonel Jones.
So as you can see, one thirty-four post for just situational awareness, that's going to be that Midtown Belvedere. Recently, they've gone through a CRC president change. I know Michelle was CRC president when I was there and I believe it just had transitioned over recently. Not unlike what you said about six thirty-one post, not a whole host of violence between non-fatal shootings and robberies, but you will see commercial robberies and street robberies, aggravated assaults in that area. Some later establishments that are opened up, you have a propensity for victimization of individuals coming from open establishments being in that business district that as they get to some of those ancillary streets, they become front targets for robberies and violence. So big focus for the district is all those business checks and directed patrol plans. You will also see the robust response in reference to vacation shift and vacation shift for their foot patrols. Both of them have averaging over twenty and thirty incidents for foot patrol as well as a multitude of traffic stops along the corridor, realizing that those main thoroughfares are providing them the necessary engagement to show that police presence along that corridor. Three, one thirty-four post reference to our SRO response, the service request. During the timeframe of October to December, there have been seven service requests from graffiti down to repairs. I know for myself, this is another engaged community within the Central District. As all of them seem to be in various points, but I know, you know, Midtown Belvedere was one that, you know, has a good following, has a strong turnout gauge down to Anne, who was always at Midtown Belvedere Committee Meeting and engaged with us. So I realize that, you know, this is something that will constantly be on the pulse of the Central District and Major Featherstone. Any other follow-ups? I'll pass it to
Thank you, Colonel Jones. With that, any additional programs happening from the agencies within the one hundred and thirty-fourth post? This is the Midtown Belvedere section.
Mr. Chair, this is Liam Davis. I think for DOT, one of the obvious ones that's coming up is eighty-three speed cameras. We're expecting those to go online in February. Now, you know, the ones that are active might not specifically be in that post, but the entire length of the interstate is essentially going to be signed, alerting drivers to go the speed limit. We're also planning a very robust public marketing campaign to alert drivers as well. We're trying to make it as hard as possible for people to get tickets, understanding that the whole speed, the main component and justification for speed camera authorization on eighty-three is public safety and reducing crashes and reducing speeding. So that's a big, big thing that is coming in February. And our studies, you know, kind of research looking at where cameras have gone on interstates and closed access highways elsewhere in the country, it demonstrated that on those corridors, there was it actually slowed speeds throughout the corridor, not just where the cameras were located. So we're really eager to get that started.
Thank you, Liam. That's a great point. And I'm curious, Colonel Jones, for the officers that often respond on eighty-three, are they coming from the Central District and where does that hopefully extra time not having to respond to accidents on eighty-three, where does that help us with additional patrol units?
So the lion's share, because as it cuts down through the center of the city. So you'll have a host of either Northwest, Northern, or Central District officers responding to incidents. And then you have the ability for, if they're not available, to pull somewhere else. I know that eighty-three has been one of the main, has not been a main, but has been a push also Fatal Fresh Reduction Team. They have been also monitoring that as well for us to proactivity along the corridor.
I guess my question, to be more specific, is the are the officers that oversee the one hundred and thirty-fourth post likely the ones that will get a little more time back once we have those cameras up and running?
The specific post one thirty-four, I believe that is I'm not sure if one thirty-four post is the exact border post of the eighty-three. I would have to follow up with that.
I do know this, Mr. Chair. When we were pushing for the authorization in Annapolis, I think the data from 2020 showed just for eighty-three, there were fourteen hundred calls for service to BPD for calls on eighty-three. So that's, you know, at least four or five per day on average.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other work going on in the one hundred and thirty-fourth posts? All right, once again here in cricket, so we'll move on to our tenth and final post, the eight hundred and thirty-fourth post. Colonel, the floor is yours.
Yep. And yes, sorry, again, my mind just came back to me. One thirty-four is going to be that bordering district for eighty-three. So they would be primarily the call for service call for that, but depending on their activity at that time, it can always be diverted to someone else within that by the sector first and then throughout the district. As it relates to eight thirty-four posts, eight thirty-four posts in the Southwestern District has suffered five homicides and shootings. Geographically, it's going to be that Mill Hill area as well as the border between Gwynn's Falls and I believe it's called Wilhelm Park, that community. You will see a robust response from the Southwest District as well as it relates to business checks, directed patrol plans, foot patrol, traffic stops, as well as warrant services on all three shifts. We'll see again another robust response in reference to our service requests along that area. Sixty-four service requests in reference to varying issues that need to be that's it.
All right. Thank you, Colonel. And the agencies, any work going on in eight thirty-four? And Michelle, do you mind pulling up the map just so folks have a good sense of where exactly it is?
Hi, Mr. Chair, again, Stephanie Murdoch with DHCD. Just touching on this post. This is a post where we have a high number of vacant building notices. We also have a high number of requests for service through the three one one service request system. In 2021, we closed one thousand one hundred and forty-five requests in this post with a completion time of two days, and that has been accomplished ninety-nine percent of the time. So our code enforcement team is definitely boots on the ground in this area.
Thank you, Stephanie. And Michelle, just to note, this is the eight thirty-five on the screen?
Yes, sir. So it's eight thirty-five because when we, the posts have changed. One of the problems of doing the top ten posts is because around, as we get to the number ten, they can fluctuate a lot, like they'll bump back and forth. I think if we end up going with homicides and non-fadals, the numbers will pretty much more stable. But when we went violence, it was like this. So I can find a picture eight thirty-four. Eight thirty-four post is just literally right next, it joins eight thirty-five post. To the, to the south or to the west, Colonel Jones?
If you see the little, it's the smaller, almost like a boot shape that is at the bottom of eight thirty-five. If you bring your arrow down some, yep, it's going to be that one right there.
Got it. Yeah, that's helpful. And I think for next time, it would be helpful for us to focus on homicides and shootings, realizing that that's the elephant in the room. So yeah, I think I think we want to go for that next time. I'll kick it back to the agencies. Thank you, Stephanie. Anyone else have any additional work going on in the eight hundred and thirty-fourth, that boot shape right under thirty-five?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Liam Davis with DOT. One of the things, and actually I want to thank the council because we got the legislation out of the council necessary to have this project move forward. That's Wilkins Avenue, Wilkins Avenue Bridge Replacement over Lower Gwynn's Falls. So recently, you know, probably within the last six years, they had redone Frederick Avenue Bridge over Lower Gwynn's Falls. Now we're rebuilding Wilkins Avenue Bridge and we're also working with Councilman Porter's office and the local Neighborhood Association. And that abuts the west side of Lower Gwynn's Falls Park on some community traffic calming initiatives as well. So there is a good amount of activity happening here from the DOT side of things.
Thank you, Liam.
Chairman, Mr. Collins, DPW, just to follow up on Stephanie's remarks. In this particular post, we had one hundred and thirty-nine boarding requests in this area and we did a lot of proactive rad abatement. And that would certainly be consistent with having a higher level of vacancies.
Wow, that's a lot. Yeah. Anyone else before we wrap up? And I want to open the floor, of course, to any questions from the, from the committee?
Mr. Chair, this is, excuse me, Councilwoman Porter, I have a question for DOT.
Please go ahead.
Yes. Do we have a projected timeline that we can report back to the community related to the bridge project?
So I can, I can get that to you. I just don't have it right now. But the first, the first thing that needs to happen is the BGE needs to go in and move that gas regulator. So we got the bill signed by the mayor. We got that copy to our project team, so they've been in communications with BGE. It has to move quickly though, because we have the federal timeline.
That's the reason why I asked you.
Yeah, we're, we're, our team's confident we're going to hit it. So I can, I can get a timeline for you, Councilwoman.
Okay, that, that makes, that makes me relieved because I know we were really kind of fighting the clock with that federal, federal money and I just didn't want to lose all the hard work that you all have done thus far. So thank you, Liam.
We're, we are good. Thank you.
Thank you both. Any other questions from the committee before I believe, I'll turn it over to Stephanie and Liam. I believe they had quick presentations they wanted to give before we closed.
Mr. Jared, are you, are you still taking sort of general questions or should I hold that to the end?
Let's hold that to the end because I do want to give Liam and Stephanie a chance to.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, I'll hand off to Liam. Stephanie, you guys got to draw straws to figure out who goes first.
Paper, rock, scissors, maybe.
I'll defer to Stephanie because you, you actually requested it first. I'll go after you.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Liam. Appreciate that. And I will try to make this quick. Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair, Stephanie Murdoch, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. I'm here on behalf of Commissioner Kennedy. I'm also joined today by Jason Hessler, our Deputy Commissioner of Permits and Litigation, Nicole Harder, Acting Deputy Commissioner of Home Ownership and Housing Preservation, and Michael Galdi from our Research and Analytics Team. We continue to stand by our bell report in support of this resolution to discuss crime prevention through environmental design and support the work of the Baltimore City Police Department. For the purpose of these quarterly hearings, we plan to share data on our work to support the Police Department in the top ten patrol posts that have experienced the highest incidences of crime throughout the year. I also plan to speak to our efforts to address quality of life issues that may be driving crime in those neighborhoods and ways the agency has partnered with the Police Department to resolve them. We play an active role in improving public safety by enforcing the building and sanitation codes, providing grants to organizations to support community development, creating partnerships with residents to create clean and safe spaces, and working across agencies to deliver timely results to citizen complaints. We have developed a dashboard to help committee members visualize DHCD's response to service requests in these top ten posts. This dashboard, which we will debut in just a moment, includes some items such as sanitation and quality of life issues like abandoned vehicles, vacant buildings, sanitation issues, property maintenance issues, overcrowding, rodents, trees and shrubs, graffiti, and so on. So I, this, this dashboard is a kind of a work in progress. So I really do look forward to working with our partner agencies and members of the committee to see how we can build it out to effectively address the work that we're doing around SEPTED and also the questions that come to you. So if we could turn over access to Mr. Michael Galdi from our Research and Analytics Team, he's going to walk us through our newly created dashboard, which is going to highlight some of the different service requests in these top ten posts.
Thank you, Stephanie. Then go ahead and share my screen and show that dashboard. So this is the dashboard that Stephanie mentioned. And this is showing those top ten posts and SRs within those posts. You can filter by a post up here so we can choose eight thirty-five, for example, and the map will zoom us in for a closer look. You can also filter by other things such as the SR type. Get, for example, or go to a different fiscal year. Go, here we go, twenty twenty-two. And we can see that one hundred percent of the SRs were completed on time and this will dynamically filter with the other pieces that we're filtering. So that's the basics of it. You can also mouse over the points and see some more information about them when they were created, when they were closed, how many total days to completion. I'll kick back, back to you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that. And as I mentioned, this is a work in progress and we do look forward to feedback from our partner agencies as well as members of the committee as two ways to improve it. As you can see, and I think something that's very important to highlight, is that we're responding to about ninety-nine percent of our service requests on time, most within two to three days. So as I mentioned, our, our team is out there boots, boots in the streets. All of these activities align with the top ten patrol posts in the top ten patrol posts align with the Mayor's Violence Prevention Plan and the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Principles. So also, I So also I have Deputy Commissioner Hessler on the call. And if he would like to take the opportunity to share a little bit about the work that his team is doing in partnership with BPD, we can do that. Otherwise, we can go ahead and move on to Liam and save that for our next quarterly meeting.
All right. And quickly, Stephanie, can you make sure to share that with the committee? And I'll make sure we also share that with all the partners so that where possible, BPD, if they need this information for intelligence or otherwise, can, you know, regularly update and keep track of what's going on in these key areas.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank Liam. Liam can take it away if he likes.
All right. Thank you so much. Let me share my screen. Just bear with me, folks. I think I need to be given, can, I have my PC hooked up. So there might be another Liam account as an attendee. Can I just get shared privileges for my PC? Oh yeah, here we go. I got it. Thank you. So everyone should see the Complete Streets Annual Report. All right. So I just wanted to go through this real quick. I think we gave everybody on the council and the state legislature a heads up when we published this. This was mandated by the Complete Streets legislation. And I think the important thing to really keep in mind here is we hear Complete Streets a lot. But this is really, this annual report is a, is a great tool to keep, for you guys to keep us accountable and for us to be transparent and also keep ourselves accountable. You know, we look at this modal hierarchy here, prioritizes walking, you're kind of lessening, lessening the priority on single occupancy vehicles. We talk about equity. Now, what do we mean by it? These are the census tracts, this map over here on the left are the census tracts exhibiting a higher average of persons of color in the, the population makeup of those census tracts, a higher percentage than the city average. On these census tracts over here, you're looking at median household income below the Baltimore city average. So it doesn't perfectly align. But you do see where there are, there are going to be precincts that, that meet both of those. And then also, an important metric for us at DOT is the percentage of households with no access to automobile. So those are areas where we would really think about prioritizing alternate modes of transportation beyond cars, prioritizing transit, bike lane enhancements and pedestrian improvements. Within this study, excuse me, within this report, there's a standard way we report the data and that's all broken up here. And we also break down how we're meeting our equity, our equity goals and hitting the areas where as an agency, we feel like it's most needed. So here is kind of where you blend all those, those kind of equity data sets together. And the darker shaded areas are going to have a higher equity priority score. So when we submit capital improvement plans to Planning Department to be considered, or if we're looking at, you know, we get overwhelmed with traffic calming requests every year. Just to put it in perspective, there's 16,000 reported car crashes in Baltimore city every year, 16,000. So given the fact that that's just everywhere you can address everywhere, we have to prioritize based on what's the severity of the problem? And where are the neighborhoods that really need it and could benefit? So that's where this comes, comes into play. There's a lot of great data in here. I don't really want to like overwhelm folks. But we, some of the stuff that is really cool, I'm just skipping through here. You can look at where the speed hump installations have been over the past couple of years. And again, this is transparent. You can see there's certain areas of the city that didn't get any. So it's a great way for us to look at this map and say, hey, maybe we really do need to prioritize East Baltimore next year, or maybe we need to get more focused down here in South Baltimore. Intersections redesigned for bikes, enhancements to intersections, like that's like quick build stuff to accommodate pedestrians. So this is really a great tool to see how we're applying complete streets. It's not just a buzzword. It is literally a policy that has been put into place. And now it's guiding our capital improvements. This shows you sidewalk improvements from 2019 and 2020. So as you can see here, it is pretty widespread and you do hit a lot of areas that meet our equity standards. So I'm just going to stop sharing for now. But if anyone has any questions, do not hesitate to ask. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Liam. Any questions before we close out that portion, Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was, the question I had was for Ms. Murdock. Related to the, the map that they pulled up on, you know, for service requests, closeouts. Don't want to beat a dead horse. But I, I know that the HCD and code enforcement do a great job at following up on complaints within the timeline usually. I haven't really experienced that not happening. But the more important, I think, metric is how, like when the work order was completed. And would be, I think that would be a little bit more of a helpful data point for us. Because oftentimes it's not code enforcement that is the slow sort of mover and identifying what the concern is. But it may be another agency that needs to follow up on that. And I think that would be a little bit more helpful for us to be able to figure out, okay, yeah, the ACV has identified that, you know, this block, the lighting is not great. But we can see it took, you know, not trying to pick on Liam or DOT, but it took them whatever X amount of weeks to complete that work order, or maybe they haven't completed at all. So it may be helpful to overlay where outstanding work orders exist so that our offices can work with those agencies to try and resolve challenges, particularly if they are in areas that have experienced high amounts of violence or, or other crimes. So that'd be my only feedback. I do appreciate the mapping. And because I, you know, I do prefer that kind of data, visual data. It's really helpful. My, my staff uses it a lot. So that would just be my only piece of feedback in that if we can get some additional input from some of the other agencies on where those identified concerns lie in the pipeline. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, we're happy to work with our partner agencies and, and see what can be added to, added to our mapping tool.
Yeah, and I, and from the DOT perspective, I don't, I don't think it's going to be an issue to kind of show where the outstanding requests are. I will say that there are kind of unique circumstances for each request. You know, a sidewalk, putting it like a sidewalk or sidewalk backlog at DOT is the largest backlog in the agency. And it's literally just a dollars and cents thing that has happened over the course of a decade. The, the rate of requests has simply outpaced funding. And that's how you get a multi-year backlog. You know, there's some, some other challenges, but again, hear you loud and clear, Councilman, we can totally try and get our GIS team to map out some of these outstanding work orders.
Yeah, I think, sorry, if I could just jump back in, Mr. Chair, I think it may be, maybe there's a way to sort of prioritize like certain types of complaints, like, you know, I don't, I mean, I do view safe sidewalks as a public safety issue. I'd be more interested in like where streetlights are out, however. Or, you know, as it relates to DBW, where, you know, there may be an outstanding work order for a, you know, couch blocking the alley and maybe there's drug trafficking happening in that same alley, you know what I mean? Like that, maybe there's a way to sort of prioritize certain, certain types of work orders. But I, I mean, I agree. There's going to be some stuff that may be beyond the agency's control. But I, you know, something like sidewalk repairs, I, I don't know, would be helpful for, as it relates to like violence reduction. It would be helpful, you know, for other, sort of just seeing where we are in our districts broadly. And, you know, maybe there's like the open Baltimore site or somewhere else, maybe a better place for that. But that, that would just be my feedback on that. I do appreciate, again, what you guys are doing to be more transparent and using technology in that way.
And Councilmember, I'll just add on very quickly that the open work orders are available for public viewing on the public facing version of code map. And that breaks it down into cleaning and boarding requests that are, you know, one to 30 days old, 31 to 60 days old, 61 to 90 days, and so on, for boarding and cleaning. So that information is publicly facing. But we'll see if there's a way to kind of layer it with this new SEP Ted dashboard that we're working on creating for these quarterly meetings.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. I'll go check it out. Thank you.
Awesome. Great question. And really thank you guys, HCD, for helping out. Councilman Ramos?
I have another. Sorry. There we go. Sorry about that. I have a question also for Ms. Murdock about the dashboard. I think it's very exciting. One of the things that I think is going to be helpful, not just with service requests, but also citation abatement, because we can't tell from code map whether, unless we're looking at the property, whether a property has actually been, the citation has been abated. And that could be abated through, they actually like did the work, or they paid the citation. And I think that's important information as we figure out like where are some of the problem landlords and problem properties and what's happening. So if we can figure out a way to get the information about citation abatement. So there's the service request, but then there's also the citation and then the citation abatement, that would be super helpful information.
That is something we would have to work with Department of Finance. Because we actually don't have the data on the payment of citations. We have all the data on where we issued citations, but then once we issue them, they can request a hearing in front of the Environmental Control Board, or they can pay them to the Department of Finance and it's completely outside of our agency. So it's something we can look at. We definitely use the where we issue citations in order to form various strategies on how to step up the code enforcement in areas where you don't appear citations are working based on the volume of citations.
So yeah, no, no problem. I mean, I'm happy to have that conversation with finance. I appreciate that clarity. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from folks on the committee before we wrap up? Okay, seeing no further questions, we're, we're going to adjourn the meeting. I want to thank everybody. You gave me three hours and six minutes out of your life. And I, I hope that we all found this helpful. I certainly found it helpful. I'm eager to see how much more we can leverage a more refined and focused effort in reducing crime in the city. With that, I hope you guys have a wonderful rest of your day. Thank you.